May 27th Metropolitan Planning Commission Regular Meeting to Order. Council Lady Murphy, I think you have to make a motion.
I'm sorry, I was out of line in talking to my friend. I'm sorry, I'm making a motion to begin, right?
Yes.
Yes.
And...
And to nominate.
Oh, and to nominate, I'm so sorry. I'm going to nominate you for the chair, wait, yes. I'm going to nominate you for this meeting, yes. Sorry about that.
Please clarify, just for this meeting, though.
Well, can I hold that part till the end and see how it goes? Just for this meeting.
Thank you.
Second motion.
Right, that's a proper motion and second. All those in favor, say aye. All right, the motion carries. So, the Governor's Executive Order Number 16 has expired, and this is the second in-person Planning Commission meeting for 2021. In order to comply with CDC guidelines and Metro's indoor capacity restrictions, we are limiting the number of people inside the conference room this afternoon. We also have options for the public to address the Planning Commission during the public hearing, either in person or through public comment on the phone line. That phone number is area code 629-255-1901. Again, area code 629-255-1901. If you would like to address the Commission during the public hearing, please come up to the podium once the public hearing is open and line up to speak behind the podium. The microphone at the podium has been sanitized. We ask that you please wipe down the microphone in the podium area after you have finished your comments. Antibacterial wipes have been provided for you at the podium. It is also my pleasure today to welcome Edward Henley, founding principal and project executive of Pillars Development, to the Planning Commission. Welcome aboard. Edward is a Nashville native, 10 years' experience with Pillars, and a University of Tennessee graduate. We're glad to have you onboard. All right, now we will move on to Item B, Adoption of Agenda. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Proper motion and second. All those in favor, please say aye. Motion carries. You all were sent earlier, the May 13th, 2021 minutes. Any changes or modifications to those minutes? Seeing none, I will need a motion for approval.
Move to approve.
Proper motion and second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Motion carries. All right, recognition of council members. I think I have the three here. Council Lady Van Reese, we will let you go first.
I'll wait, thank you.
Very good. Councilman Withers.
I'll wait as well, thank you.
Councilman Young.
I will also wait.
Very good. All right, we will move on to...
Just a moment, Chair, forgive me. Lisa, do we have any council members who wish to address the meeting from remotely?
Yes, Councilmember Syracuse is logged in remotely to speak.
Perfect. Councilman Syracuse, sorry, I was about to bypass you. Would you like to speak now or with your matter?
That is okay, I appreciate it, Mr. Chair. I'll go ahead and speak now. I have Items 10 and 16 on your agenda tonight. 10 is being recommended for indefinite deferral. However, 16 is looking to be recommended for approval. These two developments are right next door to each other, and I continue to work on being proactive with infrastructure issues in Pennington Bend area. And so, I would request that Item 16 also be indefinitely deferred until we can get some collective effort here, public and private, as far as where we're headed with infrastructure, before we continue with development in the bend. I appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Very good. We will add Item 16 to the deferral/withdraw list. So, we are now on to... Is that okay, Lisa?
I was trying to find the applicant on that item to see if they were here. I thought that they were, but...
So, it's a rezoning, and typically, we would honor the request of the council member. So, I think, I don't know, I didn't hear if he specified, but I think I'd recommend a one-meeting deferral or to...
He asked for indefinite to match the other.
I did. I know that the developer was okay with deferring. We didn't specify as far as how long. But all of these have to play with each other and play nice with each other as far as the infrastructure connecting. So, I don't have an actual timeframe about when the one, the cottages development, when that could move forward, because the others...
Okay, forgive me. So, then indefinite deferral, then?
Yes, thank you so much.
Very good. Item 16 will be up for indefinite deferral. All right, we're on to Agenda Item E, Items for Deferral/Withdrawal. Lisa?
The following items are for deferral or withdrawal. Item Number 1, 2021 SP 018001, Third and Monroe. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June 10th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. Item Number 2, 2021 SP 020001, Ben Allen Ridge. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June 10th Planning Commission meeting. Item Number 3, 2021 SP 029001, Hilltop Estates. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June 10th Planning Commission meeting. On Page 4 of your agenda, Item Number 4, 2021 SP 030001, Tulip Grove and Central Pike. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June 10th Planning Commission meeting. Item Number 5, 2021 SP 034001, 12610 Old Hickory Boulevard. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June 24th Planning Commission meeting. Item Number 6, 2021 SP 042001, an SP on Ned Shelton Road. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June 10th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. Item Number 7, 2020 S 179001, In Trust Homes on Paragon Mills. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June 10th Planning Commission meeting. Item Number 8, 2021 S 045001, Resubdivision of Lots 5 and 6 Airport Logistics. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June 10th Planning Commission meeting. On Page 5 of your agenda, Item Number 9, 2021 S 072001, Massman Heights Subdivision. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June 10th Planning Commission meeting. Item Number 10, 2020 Z 143PR001, A rezoning request on Pennington Bend Road. Staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. Item Number 11, 2021 Z 049PR001, A rezoning request on Hart Street. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June 10th Planning Commission meeting. Item Number 12, 2021 CP 007001, West Nashville Community Plan Amendment, Robertson Avenue Street Tree Plan. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June 10th Planning Commission meeting. Item Number 16, 2021 SP 021001, on Page 6 of your agenda, Pennington Bend Cottages. Staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. Item Number 19, 2021 Z 041PR001, A rezoning request on Central Pike. Staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. On Page 8 of your agenda, Item Number 24, 2004 P 013009, Mill Creek Town Center Phase 2 Amendment. Staff recommendation is to defer to the July 22nd Planning Commission meeting. Item Number 25, 2021 Z 031PR001, A rezoning request on Bluff Road. Staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. And Item Number 29, 2021 Z 046PR001, A rezoning request on Timmons Street. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June 10th Planning Commission meeting.
All right, given that we've got a couple changes, let me read this list back to you and make sure we've got it correctly. Items 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 16, 19, 24, 25, and 29. So, you've heard the items up for deferral/withdrawal? Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
That's a proper motion and a proper second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Motion carries. All right, on to Consent. Lisa, Item F.
As information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of the entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. Items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the Commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the Commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. The following items are on the consent agenda. On Page 5 of your agenda, Item Number 13, 2017 SP 075003, Sharon Road Village Center SP Amendment. It's a request to amend a portion of a specific plan for property located at 555 Creative Way to add .33 acres and permit a mixed-use development. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. On Page 6 of your agenda, Item Number 14, 2020 SP 047002, 111 North First Street. It's a request to amend the 111 North First Street specific plan to add property located at 151 North First Street to permit a mixed-use development. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item Number 15, 2021 SP 014001, 3501 Stoker's Lane. It's a request to rezone from R10 to SP zoning for property located on Stoker's Lane to permit 96 multifamily residential units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item Number 17, 2021 SP 027001, 2377 Couchville Pike. It's a request to rezone from R20 to SP for property located on Couchville Pike to permit industrial uses. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item Number 18, 9873P006, Verizon Wireless Building Expansion Revision and Final. It's a request for revision and final for property located on Hickory Hills Boulevard to permit an expansion to an existing building. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Item Number 20, on Page 7 of your agenda, 2021 Z 048PR001. It's a request to rezone from IWD to MUGA for properties located on Thompson Lane and Grandview Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve. And under Other Business, on Page 9 of your agenda, Item Number 30, a bonus height certification for 501 Third Avenue South. A bonus, Item Number 31, a bonus height certification for Passo Tower 1. Item Number 33, a resolution authorizing the expenditure of up to $200,000 for the Advanced Planning and Research Fund from the Advanced Planning and Research Fund for East Bank Planning and Technical Studies. And Item Number 37, to accept the Director's report.
Thank you. Let me read these items back to you. Items for Consent, Number 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 20, 30, 31, 33, and 37.
16 was deferred.
Correct. All right, let me read that one more time. 13, 14, 15, 17, 18, 20, 30, 31, 33, and 37.
Yes, that's correct.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
That's a proper motion and a second. All those in favor? Motion carries. We're now moving on to the items for public hearing.
Chairman, forgive me for interrupting. I see Councilwoman Porterfield has joined us, and if you would entertain any testimony from her, that would be our practice.
Absolutely. Council Lady?
I'm sorry. Is this okay? You'll have to turn it on. Okay. Up here. Thank you so much. My apologies, I was stuck in traffic. I was coming in about Item Number 17, which is on the consent calendar, I believe, and I was coming in to ask for a deferral for that particular item. I'm not sure, since it looks like you all just passed it, I'm not sure if that can be bumped off now.
Would you mind entering that into the record, Attorney?
Yes, since we're at the same meeting and you just voted on it, you can have another vote for that.
Might be, so it might be helpful, so this is Item Number 17, 2021 SP 027 at 2377 Couchville Pike. And so, you're requesting that it be deferred to how many meetings?
Two meetings, please.
You have heard the request from the Council Lady. Do we have a motion to remove it from... Mr. White?
Chairman, at some point, we'd like to address the Commission on Consent, and we'd like to address that we are opposed to the deferral, but want to talk to the Council Lady about that. So, at this point, it's taken off consent, we at least want to request an objection to the deferral.
Okay, so would you mind entering that into the record?
Yeah, I'd advise at this point to just move to take it off consent and leave it on the calendar, and then it's possible that they'll come to a decision in the meantime.
So, the challenge with that, Counselor, is it would be the first item heard, since there's nothing else before it, so I'm not sure they're going to have time to discuss the matter.
Is it possible for me to roll it down two spaces? So, do I need to resend my motion on consent or resend our vote if I was on the prevailing side? And then roll, and then we do that, and then roll it two spaces so they can discuss, and then we take it back up?
I was just going to add, I don't know that staff is ready to present that case tonight, because our policy has been that if something gets pulled from consent, then we automatically defer at one meeting. But, I mean, I guess you can move it to the end to see if anything can be worked out, but at this point, I don't think staff's ready to present the case tonight.
I think my recommendation would be to move it to the end, give, or move it two spaces, give the staff an opportunity just to come up. We can show the slide that has the location, and that will give the Councilwoman and the applicants rep an opportunity to speak. It will be a very limited presentation.
All right, so I need a motion to remove Number 17 from the consent agenda, put it back on the proper agenda, and move it two places downward. Is that a correct request?
Do we have to resend our vote on the, if we just pass the consent agenda, do we have to resend that vote?
I think you're fine to just take that off consent.
Okay. Then, my motion would be to remove it from the consent agenda and move it down two spaces on the regular agenda.
Item 17.
Yes, sir.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. All right, Council Lady Yun, Mr. White, go work this out.
Thank you.
All right, we're now moving on to the items for the public hearing. For the listeners at home, we have provided multiple ways to participate in this meeting, either in person or via call-in. Normally, we take the applicant first, then the supporters, then the opponents. Because of the different ways for people to participate, we'll be taking supporters and opponents together. To help us, please state your name, your address, and whether you support or oppose the request. As usual, we took emailed comments through Tuesday at 3:00 PM. Those comments have been uploaded and are available on the SharePoint site. We have a call-in number for members of the public who wish to call in and testify. That number, once again, is area code 629-255-1901. Please wait until the public hearing for your item begins before calling. It is a queue, so we don't want you testifying for the wrong case. If you're calling, please be aware there's a legally required 30-second delay. That means that if you watch your screen while commenting, what you see will be slightly behind you. It works better if you focus on talking to us and ignoring your screen while you're talking. These are the items we'll be considering tonight. 21, 22, 17, 23, 26, 27, and 28. We're ready to begin the first item. Note that the presenting staff is also working remotely for this hearing, and Lisa will be operating the slides. Staff?
Mr. Chair, do you mind reading that list one more time for me?
Sure. It's Items 21, 22, 17, 23, 26, 27, and 28. Is that correct, Lisa? The cases we'll be hearing?
21, 22, 17, 23, 26, 27, and 28.
Thank you.
All right, we're ready for the first presentation.
Hi, everyone. This is Amelia Lewis with the Planning Department. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, Amelia, you might speak up just a little bit.
Okay, let me address some things. Is that better?
That's better, yes, thank you.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you so much. Presenting Item 21 tonight, my name is Amelia Lewis, and I'm with the Planning Department. The request is to rezone from commercial and residential to specific plan zoning to permit a multifamily residential development with 396 units. Next slide, please. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Next slide, please. The 21-acre site is shown on the site, is shown on the screen in gray. The site is located west of Gallatin Pike in the northern portion of the county. The site is located at the northeast intersection of One Mile Parkway and Conair Drive. The site has frontage along One Mile Parkway, along the southern property line of the site. Along the western property line is Conair Drive, and along the northern property line is Apple Valley Road. The site is also bounded by an existing rail line along the eastern property line. The site is currently undeveloped, and it's currently zoned. A portion is CS, so commercial down at the corner, and the rest is RS 20 and R10 zoning. The properties to the north and west of the site are zoned R10 and have been primarily developed with one and two family residential uses. The properties to the south and west along Gallatin Pike are primarily non-residential uses and zone commercial services and some residential as well. I would like to clarify that our staff report published last week had an incorrect traffic table in it. It had added the proposed development with the daily trips generated from the existing zoning, rather than subtracting to show the difference. So, it had stated that the overall expected daily trips would be an increase of 17,000. However, it would, based on the SP zoning, it would be a decrease in nearly 13,000 daily trips. Sorry about that. Thank you, Lisa. You can go to the next slide. The proposed SP would permit a maximum of 396 units across the site and several multifamily structures. And so, you can see those on the site, located and shaded in in the medium kind of gray color. And again, we have Apple Valley Road to the north of the site, Conair Drive along the western property, and One Mile Parkway along the southern portion of the site. The proposed structures are limited to three stories and 45 feet in height. The buildings fronting One Mile Parkway, the southern property line, have pedestrian entrances to the proposed sidewalks along the street. There are two proposed vehicular entrances, one mid-block on One Mile Parkway, which again is on the south part of the screen, and along the western property line, there's another entrance from the street. These drives lead into a private drive throughout the interior of the site. There is an existing lot along Conair Drive that is currently zoned RS 20 and developed with an existing single-family structure. This property is not located within the boundaries of the SP. A 20-foot-wide landscape buffer is provided where this property abuts the proposed SP. The northern portion of the site is intended to remain as a tree preservation area to keep the existing natural buffer along this property line. Located in the northwest corner of the site, there is a private open space associated with the development. So, you'll see that at the top left, at the intersection of Apple Valley and Conair Drive. The proposed plan includes open space associated with the development, and it includes improved sidewalks and planning strips along all street frontages of the site. So, along all street frontages is either a completed, it completes the existing sidewalk network or creates a new one. The existing right-of-way would be used in front of the house that's not included in the SP to complete, to create a complete and continuous sidewalk along the whole site frontage. Next slide, please. So, there are three different policies on the site. There are, it's suburban neighborhood-evolving, suburban corridor, as well as some conservation policy. So, looking at all of these policies and how they work together, there are a lot of commonalities between the primary policies on the site of the neighborhood-evolving and the corridor policy. And some of these common goals include providing moderate-to-high-density residential development, creating buildings that are compatible with the general character of suburban neighborhoods, and a street design that moves vehicular traffic efficiently while also enhancing the network for sidewalks and bikeways or existing implanted mass transit. So, the neighborhood-evolving policy, which we see along the northern portion of the site, is completely residential, whereas the corridor policy calls for a mix of uses. However, it does indicate a preference for residential uses off of the corridor. Given that the site is located off of Gallatin Pike and not immediately on the corridor, there is less of a desire to create a commercial development here and really focus on the transition between the development along the corridor and really looking at bracing the transition between the existing neighborhood and that corridor there. So, if you can, you can look on the policy side as well and see the neighborhood maintenance along the other portions of the site. So, this site is kind of the go-between in between that corridor and the neighborhood. Next slide, please. So, another thing to look at here is the Nashville NEXT Growth and Preservation Map, which is shown on the screen. So, the site is surrounded by the circle on the screen, and the area within the site is indicated to be neighborhood and transitional. Gallatin Pike is shown there as the thick blue line as an immediate need high-capacity transit corridor. So, the areas that are shown to the north and south of the site in the darker orange are identified as centers which become nodes for higher-intensity uses and commercial development. And so, we see here that the site is located kind of between these two areas and immediately adjacent to a high-capacity corridor. So, allowing higher-density residential building types in relation to these centers and corridors really adds value to neighborhoods by growing the market and demand for consumer services and the demand for transit. And we see here that it's within the neighborhood and the transition area, again, to create that transition from the corridor into the neighborhood and provide additional residential uses. Next slide, please. As a proposed site plan meets the intent of the policies, meets the intent of the policies on the site and the goals of Nashville NEXT, specifically enhancing walkability across the site's ample frontage... across the site's ample frontage, providing residential transition from the corridor into an existing neighborhood, staff recommends approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions. That concludes my presentation for the site. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Amelia. Councilman Young, would you like to go now?
Oh, okay. I thought it should be green. I thought green meant go. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission. Little background on this site is, first of all, about roughly a year and a half ago, a different applicant came to this commission with this site with a, a different SP and site plan, and it was similar to this. It was a little more intense and it was approved by this planning commission. It included, on the northern border of the site, some multifamily rental townhomes that would be directly across the street and facing the existing single-family homes along Apple Valley to the north. I took that to counsel and ended up withdrawing that plan as I tried to work with the neighborhood and the developer at the time to come up with a better transition between the existing single-family homes and the multifamily use, and we were not able to work out something that I felt was going to be appropriate. Now, how we got to this site plan today is several months ago, the applicant for this plan reached out and I shared the background about the previous SP that had been approved by this commission. And I shared that struggle about trying to meet the concerns of the neighborhood and trying to make the transition smoother. I asked that applicant to have a neighborhood meeting. Of course, we're just now transitioning to in-person things, so that was, of course, electronically, and there was good attendance. And the original concept plan that the applicant presented also included townhomes along the northern edge of the site. And I explained, and I believe the community provided valuable input, that that was not going to be acceptable and that we needed to provide a better buffer and transition. So what has been submitted does remove any townhomes or any sort of development along that northern border. It includes approximately four acres of undisturbed green space to serve as the natural buffer. I've been working with the Parks Department because the applicant would like and is willing to deed that land and as well as the land at the northwest corner of the site to the Parks Department for it to be public land. However, running into a little bit of a speed bump as the Parks Department, like most metro departments right now, is not exactly flush in cash. And they are concerned about accepting and making commitment to ongoing maintenance of additional acres of land. So I'm trying to work with the Parks Department to figure out a way, whether that be through a maintenance endowment is the word they've thrown out to me, and trying to come up with some sort of way so that this land is available for the community's use in perpetuity. So I would say with the conditions that staff has recommended, I hope that those conditions are open to the possibility that the land does get deeded over rather than it just remaining privately accessible green space. Also, in the applicant's original plan, it did include an entrance along the Apple Valley on the north side. That was removed as well. And so really, when you look at how this site will impact the surrounding area, it kind of limits it to Con Air and One Mile Pike as far as where it's facing. As we were just hearing, the three policies that apply to this site, I feel like this particular plan does a really great job of achieving the goals of all three of those, though this is not directly on Gallatin Road. What separates it is a rail line and as we are seeing what we once used to call, or those of us that are native and remember, the Miracle Motor Mile of Rivergate, we are seeing that redevelopment occur. We have Nashville State happening just about a half-mile north, and I think this meets the objective of trying to bring some good quality density along that corridor that will continue to sustain and attract new retail and restaurant development and investment in our area. As I look through the conditions that staff has recommended, I think those are all excellent and very strong conditions set forward. In particular, the conditions regarding the bus stop on Gallatin Road and making sure that safe access is provided to it from this site. That is actually the Wigo Route 56 that is serviced at that stop. And as recently as last week, MTA confirmed that that is indeed the most-used route in the Wigo system. And so whether it be having to rebuild the bus stop or putting in the sidewalks necessary to access its current location, those are conditions I, I hope stay with in the recommendation. And those are really all the comments I have, other than to ask you for your support of this. I understand there are concerns about traffic and those are certainly valid concerns. However, I would have to say that just about everywhere in Nashville, the problem of traffic is not exclusive and the staff recommendations do include implementing several mitigating efforts that are included from the Traffic Impact Study, including re-timing the traffic signal at Gallatin Road and One Mile Pike and extending some of the timing on it. There are other improvements that are in that recommendation that I think are valid and reach as far down as the intersection of Apple Valley and North Greycroft, which is not even within the scope of the site plan. So with that, I'm, I don't know if y'all have questions for me, but I certainly hope that you will look favorably upon this and I certainly thank you, especially over the last 12 months as y'all have gotten many, many, many meetings and had many, many computer screens and long hours on WebEx. Councilmember Murphy and myself can certainly commiserate with you on our tired eyes and ears trying to figure out WebEx over the last several months, so I certainly thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Councilman. If you would go ahead and sanitize the podium and the microphone and set the example for sanitizing, sanitizing, that'd be great.
May I ask one question?
Sure.
About the park that you were, I wanted to make sure I was following that. So if, even if, if the SP clarifies that it's to stay a park, you, your still preference was that one day it would evolve into, or road, whatever, to a Metro Park? Is that what I understood? I just wanted really clear on that specific part.
Thank you, Commissioner Tibbs, for the question. I believe, and Ms. Milligan might correct me, but the staff recommendation includes, or the plan is submitted includes the preservation of that land along the north side, and at this point, Metro Parks is unable to accept it. So it would just be privately accessible, whether that be to the tenants of the space or either just, it would not be publicly accessible. So I'm trying to work through that with Metro Parks to come up with a way to, for that land to enter the park's ownership at some point. So within the confines of the SP and the restrictions, I would just ask that, that that is still open to happen in the future, that if, if we're able to figure that out, that the land doesn't have to remain private and part of this ownership, per se, that if it's able to be worked out, that it would not violate the conditions of the SP for it to transfer to Metro Parks ownership.
Thank you, Councilman. All right, we're ready for the applicant. Applicant, are you present? Please come forward. You'll have 10 minutes for your presentation and you may reserve two minutes for the rebuttal, and you'll remember to wipe down the podium and the microphone after. Please state your name and address.
Good afternoon. My name is Matt Evans. I'm a Senior Director of Development at Greystar. My address is 1033 Demumbrian Street here in Nashville, 37203. I grew up in middle Tennessee and remember going to the Rivergate Mall, you know, as a kid, so this is really an exciting project for me to be able to breathe new life into the Madison community. I'll just say that Greystar, a company I worked for, was recently named the number-one developer and number-one property manager in the country this year by National Multi-Housing Council, and I'm very grateful to work for a company with the resources that, that Greystar has. With me, I have Mary McGowan, who's with Kimley Horn, and she's here to answer technical questions related to civil design or traffic. I'll just kind of reiterate the progression quickly that Councilman Young described, but we approached him in, in January of this year to discuss a high-quality apartment community on this vacant site. We also discussed the project with Councilwoman Van Rees and gained some valuable feedback from both of them. We've had a, a neighborhood meeting, which occurred on, on March 10th of this year, and we got really good feedback from the community during that meeting. Some of the, the items that came out of that and the revisions to the plan were that we removed all the townhomes along Apple Valley and replaced them with this tree buffer. As the plan currently shows, that's about four acres of preservation space, and if you go out there today, there's mature trees that are, you know, act as a really good buffer between the homes on the northern side of Apple Valley and our, our site. We reduced the unit count by 54 units. We created this open park space at the corner of Con Air and Apple Valley Road. And then we also removed the curb cut that we initially had on Apple Valley Road just due to concerns about, you know, kids playing in the street on Apple Valley. We wanted to make sure that we weren't making, making that an ingress-egress point, so that curb cut went away and grew the, the tree preservation area on the northern side. We do understand that several neighbors would like to see this property remain undeveloped and are concerned about traffic, but we feel it's important to consider the bigger picture here. We are going through this rezoning process, and by doing that, we're actually going to reduce the traffic that current entitlements would allow for. So in other words, you know, this is, we see this as really a downzoning from a traffic perspective, and that's what's detailed in Plannings Report, and that's why Public Works supports our, our project. I'll hand it over to Mary, who can kind of talk a little bit more detail about the, the traffic study.
Mary McGowan with Kimley Horn. My address is 214 Oceanside Drive, Nashville, Tennessee. So Amelia mentioned it earlier in her presentation that, you know, they go in through and, Public Works goes in and analyzes how many trips are based on the current zoning. And so they did that, and then they also compared it to what we're proposing on this, and it's a 13,000 trip reduction. So it's 13,000 trips less than what is currently zoned on the property. So we did do a traffic study. We studied basically three different intersections based on our direction from Public Works and traffic. It was the Apple Valley Road and Con Air Drive intersection, the Gallatin Pike at One Mile Parkway, and then also we included the North Greycroft and Apple Valley Road intersection, which is a little bit further away. Some, we had, we had some historical data on traffic counts because traffic counts right now aren't super reliable because of COVID. A lot of people aren't driving as much. So we had some data from 2019 where we grew at 3% each year, and that allowed for, to kind of us to compare to some of the traffic counts that we obtained this, during this time. And so when we compared those, the growing factor and the current counts, we inflated it another 6% to 7% to account for a COVID factor is kind of what people are calling it. It's a really technical term. And then we, you know, studied all of those intersections and came up with some proposed improvements, which a lot of them are in the staff report, and it's also in our traffic study that was submitted with the SP and was reviewed by traffic. So it is to adjust the traffic signal timing by increasing the eastbound green time by five seconds and decreasing the westbound green time at five seconds, and that is located at Gallatin Pike at One Mile Parkway, so there's an existing signal there. We also are proposing some stop-ahead pavement markings, additional stop-ahead signage at North Greycrofton Avenue and Apple Valley Road, sidewalks all along Con Air, Apple Valley, and One Mile Parkway, so all three sides of the site aside from the railroad. New curb and gutter along One Mile Parkway and Apple, Apple Valley Road to coordinate with Wigo on bus stop upgrades. And then we are going to be restryping all of One Mile Parkway from Con Air to Gallatin Pike. So the big thing that we look at when we look at traffic studies is the level of service. So it's measured from A through F. I'm sure most of you have seen it with F being a failing intersection. So the only intersection that was of concern during the study was Gallatin Pike at One Mile Parkway. Its current existing condition is a level of service E with a 68 AM second delay and a 70-second delay in the PM. Once we implement, once everything is built out and we have future conditions, the delay is reduced with the revised signal timing. So we're actually going to make the existing conditions better once we, once everything's built out and the signal is upgraded. The second thing is queuing, and that's the last thing that we look at, and so we reviewed that, the existing conditions queuing and the post-conditions queuing, and so it will actually be reduced with the upgrades that we're proposing. So with that, I will save the remaining time.
Thank you so much. If you will sanitize, you all will reserve two minutes for your rebuttal. We're now ready for the in-person public comment on this item. If you would like to speak on this item, please come to the front now and line up behind the podium. Please remember to wipe down the microphone on the podium after you have finished your comments. You will have two minutes to speak. Please state your name and address for the record.
Sit down?
Sit down, please. Yes, sir.
Oh, this has been wiped. Well, thank you, Commission, for having me today. My name's Rudy. I'm actually somebody who lives on that street, right across the street from the proposed site. And this is not the first time that we're fighting this. This is actually the second time, and Mr. Young knows that as well. Our neighborhood is zoned for 63 houses, and even if we built 63 houses, we could barely handle it. Right now, there's already an apartment complex that's expanding. It's called Greycroft Apartments. They have not told you about that. We have an existing subdivision building right now. It's called Ryan Homes on Campbell. There's one way in and one way out. It's One Mile Parkway. It's one lane. We're adding like 50, 60 houses, and now we're going to put 400 units, 396. I'm not going to be here. I know the details. I'll be very clear. There's, it's going to be way too much. Even from the analysis report from Amelia, we're already overcapacity at Old Center, at Gilletteville Middle School. And we're going to add 400 apartments, plus Ryan's Homes, plus the expansion on Greycroft. How does that benefit us who are already there? We've all had our property taxes increased by 34%. All our house values have gone up 100,000. That's great, but we have to pay more taxes. What are we going to do in 30 months when Kimley Horn is done, when Ryan's Homes is done, when the expansion of Greycroft is done? There's one lane in and one lane out. I literally called the Tennessee Department of Traffic about these numbers, and they asked me, "How many lanes are on your road to get out of Gallatin?" I said, "There's only one." And he said, "Well, the developers are going to have to contribute to the expansion of the roads." And I was like, I'm like, "Is there a real solution?" It's like, "There is not."
Thank you, sir.
One more point. All of us who have bought on Cedar Bluff, we bought knowing the rules of that community that apartments are not allowed where we exist now. that apartments are not allowed where we exist now. It is currently zoned R10 and R20. Now, by changing these rules, it's not a fair practice to those who have bought and invested in that home.
Thank you, sir.
Do you all understand that?
Your time is up.
Thank you.
If you'd please sanitize the microphone on the podium. Thank you.
I hope you guys will really consider that because we're investing in the neighborhood.
Thank you, sir.
And by changing that, it's being unfair to us.
Sir, your two minutes are up. Please state your name and address, and you'll have two minutes.
Hi. I'm Jim Sears from 301 Con Air Drive. So just hearing what people are saying, there's two very large reasons why you should disapprove this plan. One was just something that Councilmember Young was just saying. It's incomplete. You don't have all the provisions to vote on. You don't have all the conditions. We need the condition for that park now. That seems to be a big part of what's been told to us as this kind of wishful thinking that even the applicant said is an open park. That's not the case. Recent documents show that it's going to be a security fence-lined area. So we'll have a fence to look at instead of a park. It needs to be there now. And the second reason you should not approve is that there's incorrect information, as we're hearing. There's, I don't know, 110,000% wrong number in the number of cars. How can you really predict what changes will be without the correct information? That would be improper to accept that. And we know that traffic will flood into the Madison neighborhood. There's two main ways to get to I-65, either through the neighborhood where it's one lane, either going one way or the other way. That's how I go to work. Or you take Gallatin Pike, which I guess is what's expected, but that's not going to be able to handle this amount of traffic either. Let's see, are there any other points? We also don't know anything about this detention pond system that they have, how deep it will be. Some Nashville.gov documents do say that it can be as deep as eight feet. Drowning and road collisions are the number one and number two causes of unintended death in those age 1 to 14. Unintentional injury-related death for children aged 1 through 14. So consider our safety. Don't be hasty with our safety. And yeah, two good reasons.
Thank you, sir. If you'll quickly sanitize the podium and the microphone. Please state your name and address, and you'll have two minutes. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Angela Smith, and my address is 1010 North Graycroft Avenue. And I would just like to play something for everyone to hear. This is what I've been hearing since January. It is blasting from the 44 homes that's currently being built. My house now has foundation issues, issues with cracks in the wall. I can't get any answers. The council has told me to contact the fire marshal. Fire marshal says they're blasting within limits. My concern is, if they're blasting every day, nearly every day, for six months for 44 homes, how much blasting is going to be done for 400 apartments? I've lived in my home for 20 years, and when I walk my dog now, I almost get hit. We have had pedestrian fatalities in our neighborhood. We've had car accidents resulting in fatalities. Even emergency vehicles come through North Graycroft to get where they need to be. People use our neighborhood as a cut-through even when they don't live there. So my concern is also with 400 additional homes or apartments in addition to the 44 houses. We can't handle it. I feel like if people can afford these apartments, they're probably not going to be taking the bus to work. So not to mention the increase in crime. I've had people try to get into my house. They claimed to the police officer they thought my home was an Airbnb. I'm picking up needles in my front yard from people tossing drug needles. A child was almost abducted last week on North Graycroft. So with these apartments, I'm also concerned with the amount of crime.
Thank you so very much. Thank you for sanitizing as well. Good afternoon. You'll have two minutes. Please state your name and address.
My name is Jacob Williams. I live at 322 Monticello Avenue in Madison, which is right up the street from the development. I oppose this rezoning. I think everyone agrees that this site will be developed in some way, and I am not arguing against that. I also have no problem with apartment complexes. I've lived in several myself, and I have no issues with that. The problem is the nature of the site and the number of cars it's going to put under our roads. Fixing the timing of the light at One Mile Parkway is good, but that won't fix the number of cars that are going to drive through our community. Right before I stepped up to speak right now, I put this property into the GPS from here, and it took me through our neighborhood, up Graycroft to Apple Valley through the neighborhood. So it doesn't matter what you do at the intersection of One Mile because it is actually shorter to drive through the neighborhood to get anywhere in Nashville from the neighborhood. All of the cars will drive through our neighborhood every day. Also, apartment complexes attract younger tenants, and younger people drive more dangerously. So this will potentially add several hundred young aggressive drivers to our streets. Just recently, a pedestrian was killed on Graycroft Avenue, and there have been more and more accidents. We have more than 1,000 houses in our neighborhood, plus Graycroft Apartments. We are hemmed in by I-65, Dry Creek, and Railroad. Every day, hundreds of cars cut through our neighborhood to avoid the school zone on Old Hickory. And there are really only three entrances that people use in our neighborhoods. One Mile Parkway to get to Gallatin and Graycroft and Ronnie to get to Old Hickory. Hundreds more aggressive cars will be dangerous in our neighborhood. I would also like to mention the terrible intersection of One Mile Parkway and East Campbell Road. When there is traffic making a left turn onto One Mile from East Campbell is a blind corner because the cars block the line of sight. So most people drive through the Lowe's parking lot to avoid it. If the entrance to the apartment complex is going to be between Campbell and that entrance, all the people going into the apartment complex will use the Lowe's as their entrance to get in. I have no problem with the site being developed, houses, tall and skinnies, townhomes, even a shopping center, anything but 400 units. It's just too much. It's a terrible, dangerous place to put an apartment complex, and it just is. And it's because of the specific nature of that site because we're so hemmed in geographically for our entire neighborhood.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
If you'll wipe down behind yourself, that would be great for your next neighbor. Please state your name and address, and you'll have two minutes.
My name is Penny Gentry. I live at 1015 Woods Lake Drive, also in Madison. My biggest complaint is the traffic. Most people use, they get off at Old Hickory Boulevard and cut through North Graycroft to get to the Rivergate Hendersonville area, especially when there is a situation on the interstate, being I-65 north or south. I've watched a lot of traffic come through. I've lived in my house for 33 years. I am not on Graycroft. I am straight over. I have witnessed so much, I won't even go there. My concern with this is they're saying they're going to do the buffer. Hey, great. I'm all for nature. But they're also not admitting the, there's a lot of the panhandlers that are at the One Mile Pike and Gallatin Road. There's so much of that right now. I'm just concerned that this is going to bring in more because you can watch them drop them off and leave. That's just one. Everybody else has got great valid points. My biggest concern is the traffic coming from I-65 cutting through to get to Old Hickory Boulevard and go towards Hendersonville, Old Hickory, and so forth. I'll let y'all go.
Thank you so much. If you'll quickly wipe down.
It's still wet for me.
Thank you, ma'am. Please state your name and address, and you'll have two minutes.
My name is Carolina Sears, and I'm at 301 Con Air Drive. I definitely agree with what my neighbors and what my husband have said about traffic. We moved into this house about a year ago off of Con Air, and I have witnessed one death. It was pretty traumatizing to see. And I witnessed injuries and near injuries off of Con Air, just in my front window. And this is during the pandemic, the height of the pandemic, when traffic has been low. I don't even want to know how it's going to look like once things start up and running again, once this development that's already there is built up, and if this, God forbid, happens. I'm just worried about safety. But to bring another point is that when I moved into this neighborhood, a kind neighbor welcomed me and told me that for decades, this neighborhood was meant for families to grow and thrive and to appreciate nature. It's why each home has plenty of land for each family to care for. And as someone who cannot breathe well in the city limits and who has lived in, actually, Kathleen Murphy's district for a while, I moved out so that I can breathe. And increasing the traffic will increase the air pollution, and I would not want that. I want to be able to breathe. I want our children to be able to breathe better, and increasing the traffic just would not be a very good idea. I think that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Council lady, welcome.
My name is Nancy Van Rees, and I live at 209 Marlin Court, within walking distance. And I'm here to speak both as a council member and as a resident. The Lowe's across the street there at One Mile Parkway is in District 8, so we're really right on the line there. A lot of the traffic that has been spoken about that comes down One Mile Parkway out of the neighborhood to make that right-hand turn to Gallatin Pike is a journey that I take every day now for 21 years. I'm very familiar with it. There's been a consistent concern about making sure that the 56 along Gallatin Pike has an opportunity to thrive. We have an excellent stop. If I'm getting on the 56, I'm walking there from my house off of Highland Circle to get on the 56. I take a little bit of pushback against the idea that if you can afford a $2,000 apartment, that you wouldn't take the bus. That kind of talk needs to stop. Everyone should be taking the bus. We have a lot of work to make sure that that education in regard to its benefits is taken care of. But I got to tell you, in this town, there are going to be a lot of people taking the 56 out of Madison into downtown and back again. I'm also very encouraged by the data in regard to the current zoning. I have looked at this empty lot for 21 years and wondered, what's going to happen to traffic if we suddenly get some sort of commercial development that causes constant traffic in and out, as opposed to folks coming and going naturally out of their own living quarters? 14,000 trip reductions? I mean, that's the data, right? So 14,000 trip reductions is a real win for me as a resident. As a council member, I am impressed by Councilmember Zach Young's diligent work on making sure that he gets this as right as possible. I also pledge to him, as much help as we can do together, to evoke some traffic calming opportunities throughout these neighborhoods. The Madison precinct just reported to us that crime in Madison is down 8%. That does not mitigate individual situations where tragedy may have occurred, but understand that crime is down in Madison. I'm proud of that. We are all very proud of that. So as a current council member, I lend my support to this because I think, over time, it'll allow us the opportunity to have incredible new neighbors and offer green space. And as a resident, I welcome the opportunity to be able to reduce traffic in this area. Thanks.
Thank you, council lady. And thank you for sanitizing. Anybody else in the audience in the room? Come on up. Please state your name and address, and you'll have two minutes.
Hi. Good afternoon. My name is Lauren Hunt, and I live at 409 Monticello Avenue. I'm just going to echo my neighbors. You've heard it all. There's traffic. Right now, it is a fairly difficult situation. I do commend the developers and the councilmen because I think this is a nice plan in a lot of ways. I like the green space, taking the exit out of Apple Valley. That will help exactly where my neighborhood is, but I don't think it's going to help a lot of my neighbors further down on Apple Valley. I just want to echo that number one concern that there is just one way in and one way out of that area. There's just one small one-lane road, which is One Mile Parkway, onto Gallatin. And I'm not against a development there. I think 400 is kind of astronomical, but just, I think there needs to be some way to widen the road or just create another way to get more access to Gallatin. That's just my only concern. I can't, I understand that this is a trip reduction from the zoning that exists, but right now, there's zero people there. And now there's going to be 400 family units, and that just seems like a lot of families for one lane. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. If you'll quickly do that. All right. We're now ready to take calls from the members of the public who wish to call in. Your screen should show the call-in number. If you'd please call in now. You do not need to wait to call until others have called in or have finished speaking. As a reminder, please only call in on this current case, number 21. When you begin your testimony, please state your name, address, and whether you support or oppose the item. We are not able to display a timer visually, but Sean will be keeping track of time. She will give you a 30-second warning when your time is nearly up. She'll also let you know when your time is up so we can disconnect and move on to the next caller. Sean, do we have callers?
Hi, Chair. We do have callers. We're getting the first one queued up, and I'll let you know when.
Caller, please state your name and address, and you'll have two minutes. Thank you.
My name is Morgan Murray, and I live at 518 Mackport. In addition to the comments that the other people have made in opposition to this, I just would like to add, I bought a home in this area three and a half years ago specifically because it was not right next to an apartment complex. My home is part of the little tiny cul-de-sac in the images that were shown by the agents that were attempting to build this monstrosity next to my home. I adamantly oppose this being built. I have children that one day hopefully will play in this cul-de-sac in this area. There are already children who play in the roads leading up to that area, and traffic is already pouring this. I would like to think that the data that they collected in regards to the traffic pattern was accurate, but I just don't think that it is. Just because they added a couple percent to what it might have looked like in 2019 is not going to give an accurate representation of what it will look like when there are 400 individuals living in those homes, in addition to their spouses, or partners, or their friends, who will be visiting in and out of our neighborhood. People come from I-65 down Graycroft, or they come from Dickerson up to Apple Valley. And those are the main ways into our neighborhood because nobody's going to go all the way down to Hickory Boulevard to then come up Gallatin to come to their home. That's just not a feasible and not a responsible way to drive in your own vehicle. No one's going to do that. So I really hope that you take the time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Sean, we're ready for the next caller.
Chair, we have no additional callers in the queue for this item.
All right. Given the slight delay, why don't we pause for 30 seconds and see if anyone else calls in? And then we will give the applicant two minutes for rebuttal.
Absolutely.
Sean, any additional callers?
No additional callers in the queue for this one.
Very good. Applicant, you will have two minutes for rebuttal. Very good. Applicant, you will have two minutes for rebuttal. You just turned it off. There you go.
Okay, I'll just run through kind of high-level comments that we heard there. So in regards to Mr. Sears' comment on the Metro Parks communication, we were very clear in our neighborhood meeting that we did not believe that Metro Parks had the funding for long-term maintenance of a park there, but we would certainly approach them and try to make that a possibility. And we also during that meeting indicated that the fallback would be to have it as a resident amenity, so to still preserve it as green space, so that, you know, nothing has changed in terms of how that property, that part of the property looks. It has always been green space, will always be green space. The question is whether it's adopted by Metro Parks or not, which we're hopeful that we can come to terms with them on that. The detention pond, we will fence that off as a safety measure. Obviously, number one priority of ours, we don't want residents to have children fall in there, so that will be fenced. In regards to Angela Smith's comment on blasting, we are very careful about our blasting practices, and we'll do pre-blast surveys to monitor how their properties, surrounding properties were before and after. If there's any issue that comes up during that period, we restore, you know, neighbors to how their original foundations were. So there should be no concern there. You know, I guess a majority of the comments were related to traffic. I would urge you to look at all the conditions and all the improvements that we are providing and the public works support for those improvements. There was a comment from the lady at Maxi Court who indicated the scale may be incorrect on our traffic counts. Those were given from public works. So they're escalating traffic from 2019 to what they think it is today, and in their opinion, that that is accurate information. So that's not something that we necessarily generated. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. All right, I will declare the public hearing closed, and we will discuss this among the commissioners. Commissioner Tibbs, I'm going to let you go first.
Thanks. First, so there are two exits, though, right? Is that top one an exit, egress exit out as well?
There are two entrances and exits to the development, one to the south to One Mile Parkway, and then one to the west to Con Air.
I just wanted to make sure I understood that. And I keep looking, and I'm probably overlooking what the... Did we have anything in our conditions regarding the park at all? I'm sorry, should have kept you up there. I'm sorry.
So there's not necessarily a condition, but if it was to be that something was worked out with Metro Parks and it was transferred to Metro Parks, then that wouldn't be in conflict with the plan. So you can see the large outlined property on the corner of Apple Valley and Con Air. That is planned to be open space. It's planned to be private open space at this point, but that would be the part that they're having discussions about with parks. In addition to that, if you'll notice sort of the area between Apple Valley and the buildings, the wide area, I can't point with my pointer because of the way it's hooked up, but the area between Apple Valley and the buildings, that is a large area that has existing trees. And let me see if I can pull up a aerial. Yeah, so all of the... So north of that area between Apple Valley and where the buildings were, that's indicated on the plan as tree preserve area. And so there will actually be trees that are maintained as a buffer.
Okay. Don't leave yet, Lisa. And the park is right there in the corner, right? The, you know, the area we're calling a park.
The planned open space, right, you can see it on this one, on this drawing outlined with a dash line showing, indicating a fence. That would be the planned open space.
And can we, with the SP, since it's an SP, could we, you know, make it a condition that it is a park that they are, you know, taken care of? Or is that because it would be public, that's not something we can give them as a stipulation?
I believe that the council member has been working with the Parks Department, but the Parks Department would have to essentially agree to take on the maintenance of a park.
For them to, as part of the developer...
Oh, for them to make it open space, open to the larger community.
Yeah. Can they do that?
I think we could require anything related to land use or access. At question is the maintenance and how that would work.
The owner may want to speak to that, too, because I'm not certain about liability issues if you have sort of private open space that you're maintaining that then is open to the larger public in regards to the liability that would then become on the property owner.
So the better idea is what the councilman's trying to do then. Okay, I just wanted to get that cleared up. I think I'm done with you, Lisa, but maybe I'll wait till you sit down before I think of something else. So when I first looked at it, I did feel like it was, you know, it was pretty massive, you know, it was my first thought for it. But, you know, I hated the councilman's very, and I appreciate all the work. It sounds like you have been trying to put in to get something that works here. And of course, I really appreciate all the neighbors' concerns with it. And it's rightfully so. For 400 new people coming into the area, I can understand the trepidation of how this, you know, how this affects them and the, you know, the lack of control of it. I was, you know, when I was thinking two, I was thinking, okay, well, two exits are okay. And then I was hearing one, I was saying, well, one's not, you know. So I felt, you know, I feel a little bit better knowing that there's two means of egress out of it. You know, I wouldn't mind if it was broken down a little bit more, but, you know, I guess I trust the... Because you're right, I think the last one was a lot more. I don't know how many units were there last time. Yeah.
There's four more than this one.
Okay.
It's 400. Now it's 396.
Caring.
Sorry, I'm just clarifying.
But anyway, so anyway, so I was still kind of a little torn on that part of it, I guess, in that case. But still, nevertheless, and, you know, really, even, I was actually even thinking before Nancy came up, too. I was like, I would sure like to hear her opinion of it because I knew her area was adjacent to it. So I do appreciate you coming up, too. You know, I think based on what I'm seeing, I'm a little bit leaning toward that I'd be toward approval for it. I'm interested in hearing more of the conversation about it. You know, I could see, I think I'm getting there, but I'll wait and listen to some of my commissioners to know for sure.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you. I think I would like to ask several questions regarding the traffic. I know traffic study was done. I think it was towards Gallatin access, and then there will be some kind of improvement. But is there any study regarding a neighborhood street such as, let's see, Upper Valley, North Greycroft? I think, you know, as a human nature, if Gallatin Road is backed up, they, you know, majority of the people may want to use alternate route. So that will be Upper Valley and Greycroft to get on the I-65. So I'm interested to know, is there any study done for that neighborhood street? Or also, what's the category of that street? Is this what they call MS Major Street Plan?
So let me answer that portion of your question, and then I'm going to toss it to John Bagozian, who is on the line from Metro Public Works, who can speak in more detail about the scoping of the traffic study, which did take into consideration several intersections, not just the One Mile-Gallatin intersection. So looking at the major and collector street plan, Greycroft, as it travels to, down to Old Hickory Boulevard, is a collector street, and portions of Apple Valley are also collector streets. And so they are intended to collect more traffic from local neighborhood streets. And so that is a classification of a major street in our major and collector street plan. And then I will let John speak to the scoping of the traffic study in regards to which intersections were studied.
Okay.
This is John Bagozian at Public Works. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Yes, sir, we are.
Okay, great. Yeah, they analyzed a couple intersections, One Mile Parkway at Gallatin Pike, Con Air Drive at Apple Valley Road, and Greycroft Avenue at Apple Valley Road.
Do you have any improvement recommendation for those intersections, especially Upper Valley, Greycroft, in that intersection?
So they conducted a capacity analysis, as they always do at all our study intersections. And it was determined that with the existing background and future trip generation at these intersections, that the intersection Greycroft at Apple Valley Road would operate at Level Service A for all approaches, and that besides updating some signage and some striping to warm for the always stop, there were no capacity improvements.
Thank you. You know, what I, since this is SB, what I would love to see is every time, you know, this kind of scale of development comes in, I would love to see something to contribute to the neighborhood, such as, you know, more traffic calming measure. So I have not seen anything specific, so I would love to see more neighborhood amenity and contribution. And as far as, you know, density, it's a shocker because, you know, everybody expect this open space will stay in open space. So, you know, it will expect. But so I think it's always, sometimes, you know, one unit is one too many. So I understand neighborhood concern, but as far as the policy is concerned, I understand why staff is recommending, you know, this density closer to Gallatin. So one thing I would love to see is, you know, more public transit utilization. That's always a tough one because, you know, not everybody drive the car, but at the same time, we cannot mandate everybody use public transportation. But at the same time, if we put more density, it's kind of encourage public transportation. So which is, it's always egg comes first or chicken comes first. So as far as policy is concerned, it's always a tough decision. But I do understand why, you know, staff is recommending this location be changed, especially from commercial to residential use. But I will be interested here what other commissioners think. Thank you.
Thank you. Council lady Murphy?
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to point out a few things that, first of all, I'm familiar with this area and the Madison Motor Mile. And so I think it's also, it's great where Nashville State is going in up the street from here. It's a fabulous facility that is expanding. I have their base location or main location next to my house, and I know that several of my neighbors attend Nashville State. And so being able to have some other housing options near Nashville State, I think will not only help Nashville State, but also help students that are trying to get ahead or who are not going the traditional four-year college route, or adult educators or learners going back to school. So I think that this is a housing type that is needed in the area because I do feel that, even though it is the Madison Motor Mile, that car lots are kind of going away, right? Like, we would like to see that transitioned out, even though I know the Madison River Gate Chamber has really worked on that branding and things. It's something that I'm sure the neighbors would like to see phased out as well. So I also like that this plan, as opposed to what the commission approved before, pulls the, pulls kind of the density down towards One Mile Parkway. So it's, and creates that buffer. I do think that there is the potential here for them to do a trail. I'm surprised that there's not a trail or walkway or playground on here. I think you're missing that, and you could have submitted that ahead of time that would have been beneficial. I know that other sites have done this. I don't know off the top of my head, and Lisa, I don't know if you would know this either, but we love to give you questions and see, like, it's Lisa's land use trivia. Fontanelle has a greenway on it that is open to the public. Do you know who maintains that greenway on Fontanelle?
That is actually within a metro easement.
Okay.
And so that is a metro.
That is a metro. Okay. But so I feel very confident that something could be worked out here, and I would be very open to putting some sort of condition on here that required some sort of either metro easement and greenway, walking trail, playground. It sounds like children are playing in the street. That's not safe. And this development is supposedly going to generate more elementary school children. So again, a playground and walking trail, I think, would be easy adds here. That would be a win for everyone. So I think that's doable. I think this is an appropriate location for this type of density. And I think compared to what could go in here under the base zoning that exists now, that this is definitely better. And so I commend the councilman for pulling the last zoning that I know a lot of neighbors were against, because I think this is a better plan, and that's sometimes what council members have to do, is pull it and wait for a developer. So with this, I would give it my support, but I would like to see us put the condition on that the councilman works out some sort of recreational, what have you.
Thank you, council lady. Commissioner Henley, welcome aboard again.
Thank you for that, Chair. A lot of the comments that I had have already been addressed, and I agree with Councilmember Van Reese on a lot of topics. I do have two questions, so Lisa, I'm sorry for making you stand up, but what are the, what's the parking space count for the development, if you have that information? And I can, and while you're looking, I'll say while I'm asking. One of the things that I'm thinking about is we're talking about converting this space to park, and I know that's meant to be a neighborhood amenity, but I just think about, if it's privatized now, what does that mean if it does become a park and how people commute to it now? I mean, the one thing you don't want is people trying to park on the street to use an amenity that's now public when that's not considered in the plan. And then also, is there bike racks or any kind of areas that are dedicated for non-vehicular transit?
If you can give me two seconds. I'm trying to get the parking space count from the reviewer.
And then I have a question that may be more to the applicant, or maybe Public Works. When you did the traffic impact study, do we know if any of those developments that were mentioned earlier were considered in that? Because it sounded like there were some sizable development changes. Were those considered in the traffic impact study as well? I see nodding, so just yes for those who may be listening.
I got the count for you.
Sorry, go ahead.
Oh, hey, John, the voice from above. It's 635 spaces. So they're meeting the code. They're meeting the code required spaces. They may have a few extras. If there was sort of a park area, there could be the ability to add a few spaces if needed to serve that use.
Okay.
See, sorry to interrupt. This is Amelia as well. And I don't know if you can see it on the site plan, but just south of the area that is shown as the park, there is parking, I guess, right off that entrance there, right up against the park. So that could serve as additional parking if that were the reason for the trip.
And it sounds like that might be enough capacity to still allow...
Yeah, it's along that drive. There's some on-street parallel parking.
That would still allow for the development to meet requirements?
Yes.
Okay. That was my main consideration. I mean, again, I'll say where I stand. I'm definitely someone who believes in density because we need it as a city to accommodate all those that are coming. I also think it's important that there's, you know, critical thought to the transition into a neighborhood. I feel like this is an improvement from the last plan. I feel like most of what we heard as part of the rebuttal is that there was a symptom of a community being underserved, particularly in this public realm, right? Especially when it comes to safety. I think what I heard from most people is that they were frustrated with traffic, and then they didn't feel safe. Those are city challenges. That's not something we need to put on our developers. They're just agents that we can help leverage. So I believe that, you know, I agree with my fellow council and commissioners that we have to do something that really looks at the space and the traffic in those areas. But I don't, I don't believe that's pushing me to disapprove what's presented here today.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Sims?
Can you believe this is his first time? It's pretty amazing. We're so glad to have you. I want to usually just address, because everybody else goes, usually goes first, and they always hit and nail it just on terms of what the real conditions are. But I really want to speak to the neighbors because... But I really want to speak to the neighbors because it takes a lot of energy and time and commitment to be able to come and really stand against a lot of the forces that are here. But I want to let you know that I read every one of your letters, and you made really good points, and those of you who came tonight. I went and walked the space. The first thing that struck me when I walked it was this has got some beautiful conservation potential here, and that we shouldn't lose all of it for the sake of what our city needs in terms of increased density. So I really want to follow up what our councilwoman said about doing something to set as a condition that this really will be preserved, 400 housing, new housing without any kind of really green space. And if you were to zoom out from this, and I did, you're going to see that there, it is a really crowded area already, and it really does need some type of green space. So I would be willing to do this on the condition that we do something about that. I also really want to thank Councilwoman Van Rees, because when you get in a situation like this where you really do have two competing goals, one goal is really, we need more housing. We have got to do that as a city, and a space this big was bound to get developed. I think this plan is about as good as we can get it, with exception of adding this green space. The other is that you've got people really wanting to, a safe neighborhood in terms of traffic. And when you've got those kind of two competing goals, I really need data. And every time councilwoman comes up, she gives us hard data to make decisions, because my tendency is to make it out of my heart, but I've got to make it out of my head. And I really do believe buses conserve this area. I really do believe the traffic study was conducted by our own government. So I really thank you, Councilwoman. I long for all of our council to give us that kind of stuff, because it's hard to hear neighbors. I really understand. I live in a neighborhood that has been run over, and I know it's not easy, and this decision's not easy. So again, I thank you for making your voices known.
So I'm going to take a little bit of liberty as a commissioner and not the chair and ask a couple of questions to the applicant. Lucy said that was okay, correct? So tell us what your plan is for the park, if you don't mind. What are you, what are you building there, private or public?
Sure. Our first priority is to make it a public park and work with Metro Parks to take over that space. So whether it's deeding it over or an easement, allowing them to maintain it long-term. We have offered to put a playground, walking trails, all that in, and then hand it over to them for long-term maintenance. And in our, we had a meeting with Cindy Harrison and Tim Nish actually came out. He looked at the site, and they said, "That's great. That's, we're very thankful that you want to do that. We would love that." They went back, looked at their budget, and said, "We just can't maintain it long-term." So our fallback has been to keep that same park, but only allow our residents to use it. Like Lisa was saying, we can't have, you know, the liability of people, of the public coming onto our property and, you know, getting hurt or something. So, you know, we prefer to keep it as amenity for our residents if Metro can't maintain it long-term.
So it may be your lucky day or your unlucky day, because I also serve on the parks board. So my question to you is, if you build it and parks would maintain the physical structures, would you agree to maintain the landscaping into perpetuity?
Agree to maintain the landscaping. If you could, yeah, if you could negotiate that in.
So that's where the Parks Department is struggling for operating dollars, is to cut the grass, plant the flowers, mulch the beds.
Exactly. And we had discussed a maintenance endowment in order to fund that. So we believe that's the best method forward, and if that checks the box for, you know, the maintenance in perpetuity for you, then that works for us.
So as my fellow commissioners are considering a motion, I would love to add that the applicant build the park and maintain the landscaping into perpetuity. All right. Any more discussion among the commissioners? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for approval with the added condition, I'm sorry, I don't want to get it wrong, that they deed it over and that they, but they in perpetuity maintain the landscaping. Did I cover that part of the parks concern?
Correct.
Okay.
Counsel, are you okay with that?
I would just point out it's a condition that it sounds like you'll need Metro approval for, so I don't know if you want to, that's just something to be aware of.
So like an easement or deed it over, is that, you're saying that needs approval from like legal?
I mean, I would think you'd need parks to disapprove of this.
Correct. You'll need parks to approve, accepting it upon completion.
Okay. And I think that's something that probably the councilmen can work out before or hold it up at planning since, and as Chair, happy to. My, my condition is conditional on parks. I don't think that reaches our goal of making it a condition, a conditional condition. Councilman, I'm sorry. I think we want to have that, or we don't want to do this, is I think the feeling that I'm getting. So with that, I would like to add, to add the condition that something be worked out here in the spirit and the nature that we have discussed. That's a condition that will be sent over to the council, that there is a public access park here maintained by the development.
Let me clarify that, that the landscaping is maintained in perpetuity.
The landscaping maintained in perpetuity. They're going to have to cut their grass and maintain their landscaping anyway. They might as well do it here as well.
Correct. That is a proper motion.
I definitely second that. That's what I was trying to get to, so.
So we have a proper motion and second. All those in favor, please say aye. The motion carries. All right, we're now on to item number 22.
Hi, everyone. Oh, sorry. Okay, can you guys hear me okay?
We can.
Thanks. This is Amelia with the Metro Planning Department presenting item number 22 tonight. Next slide, please. The request is to rezone from residential single-family to specific plan zoning to permit a detached accessory dwelling unit, often referred to as a dadu. Next slide, please. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Next slide, please. So the site shaded in gray there on the screen is approximately one acre and is located on the east side of Estes Road, north of the intersection of Hobbs Road and Estes Road. The site has been developed with an existing single-family structure and detached garage. So as you can see from the aerial, the surrounding properties are primarily all residential with varying levels of intensity. The properties to the north and west of Estes Road are zoned RS20 and have been developed with primarily single-family structures and some two-family structures as well, which are visible by the parcels zoned R20 on the screen, which you can see. East of the site highlighted with thicker zoning lines. To the east of the properties are one and two-family residential, with most properties zoned single-family and some one and two-family. The five-acre property immediately to the south of the subject site and at the intersection of Hobbs Road and Estes Road has been developed with 18 detached residential units. So you can see that south of the subject site as well. Next slide, please. Here we have kind of the site layout. So Estes Road along the western property line, and then we have the existing single-family residence located kind of mid-site. The driveway is circular located between Estes and the house. And then we see the detached garage located at the northeast corner of the site. So the proposed SP would permit the conversion of the detached garage at the northeast corner of the site into a detached accessory dwelling unit or an additional unit that one could live in. The proposed structure would be approximately 1,400 square feet and 20 feet in height. The proposed building materials would be similar in nature to the primary structure on the site. Next slide, please. So the site highlighted in red is within the neighborhood maintenance policy, suburban neighborhood maintenance policy, which is intended to maintain and enhance suburban neighborhoods. The policy guidance for this area is that when development occurs within a neighborhood maintenance policy, efforts should be made to retain the existing character of the neighborhood in terms of development pattern, building form, land use, and the public realm. The proposed dadu is located within an existing structure and adds one additional unit to the site. However, it maintains the residential land use on the site and within the area as a whole. The location of the structure is located away from the street and would not impact the existing development pattern or public realm along Estes Road. Additionally, the site is double the size of the minimum lot size for the zoning districts and adjacent to a more intense residential development. And the proposed use of the specific plan is consistent with the policy at this location. Next slide, please. For the reasons previously identified with the policy, staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions, which concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Amelia. Council Lady, would you like to go first? And you'll need to turn the microphone on right there. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. And I'm here to speak in support of what is a somewhat anomalous situation and somewhat unusual. And Mr. and Mrs. Lupier, I hope can also speak, because they can speak more kind of sequentially to what has, what has happened here vis-à-vis their permitted construction. And so I think it was well-spoken as to kind of what is surrounding this acre parcel. And by way of just constituent contact, the folks to the south and to the north are in support. I have not, into my inbox, received any opposition from anybody that is adjacent or facing. I know that you, I was not able actually to get into the SharePoint site to see what had been sent to you all or requested access, but could not see that. But into my own inbox, I have been CC'd on a lot of what was sent to you, Commissioners. And so there is some concern in the broader community about, you know, whether this would be precedent-setting and so forth in what is, you know, on the whole RS zoning, but as you can see in the immediate proximity, 18 units to the south, you know, various kind of HPRs and duplexes around, and Estes being a larger collector. The Lupiers reached out to me about this subsequent to their going to the BZA to reach a remedy, because Metro issued them a valid permit to expand this garage apartment that was in place upon their purchase of this property. So, you know, whether allowed or not, when they bought this property, there was a garage apartment with, you know, bedroom amenities and so forth. And I'll let them deal with kind of the technical details of what was there and what they were permitted to do. But they were permitted to expand that with a bedroom and a bathroom with the intent, you know, of a poolhouse and so forth. And so bought that with that understanding, got a permit, then proceeded, and then Metro realized at some point of inspection that the permit had been issued in error. And so that permit was revoked, but they were almost done with construction. And so they are kind of caught betwixt and between here, went to the BZA. The BZA had empathy for their situation, but could not, it was not within their purview to really provide a remedy. I inquired with the Lupiers, could you attach this to the existing home and thus kind of not have this issue? But right in the crux of where one might physically attach these two things, there is a massive beautiful oak tree, really sizable. And so if they were to have to attach that, you know, and based on sort of the layout, and Mr. Lupier can speak to that more logistically. So, you know, it's somewhat of an anomalous situation. It's kind of how do we fix this? There's absolutely a concern in the neighborhood about dadus being used as short-term rentals. That is a condition of this SP, that it cannot have a dadu use. And it's not kind of severable from this property, even though it is at an acre size and per RS20 zoning potentially, I mean, not as currently built, but could be, you know, split. So those are provisions or conditions in the SP. So I think that that meets and addresses those concerns. And then I would just defer to the applicants to address the more kind of technical specifications of why they are before you.
Thank you, Council Lady. If you'll quickly sanitize. We don't want to put you in the penalty box. So the applicants will have 10 minutes. If you'll come up and state your name and address and explain your situation.
I'm Steve Lupier at 4020 Estes Road here in Nashville. When we bought our property four years ago, I suppose, it was listed in the MLS, Anzillo, and all these listings, that the home came with the house and a detached guest house. And in that listing, it stated that it was a kitchen, a bathroom, and a bedroom in the guest house. So that's how we bought the house. We knew no different. When we subsequently, last December, November, December, applied for a permit saying, "Here's what we're going to do," which was add another bedroom, remodel the kitchen, add another bathroom and a laundry room, as well as building a carport onto the front of the garage, we were given the permit, so we started working. And as we got finished with all of our rough-in mechanicals and framing and all of this, come to find out that it was not to be used this way. So that's when we started the process of what do we have to do to get it rezoned? Our goal is simply to use it as a poolhouse, and in the event that our parents, who are aging, need somewhere to live and have a little bit of privacy, that we can have them stay with us in the back guest house. Never been intended to have it used as rental property or income-producing property whatsoever. We don't want that. We've got a, it's a gated driveway at the house. From the house back to the guest house is a gated driveway there. We don't want people in the back that aren't family. So we said that we would be willing to sign, if we had to sign something that says that we would not ever use it as a VRBO or short-term rental-type property. Our intention is to use it simply as a guest house. If we have folks in for a long weekend or whatever, they can stay out there as well if they need to. But that was our goal.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
If you'll quickly sanitize. We will now open this up for the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak? Seeing none, Sean, do we have any callers on the phone for this matter?
Chair, the phone is ringing as we speak, so give us a minute to confirm whether it's for this item, and I'll check back in.
Thank you.
While we're waiting, Chair, I apologize to the councilwoman that you weren't able to access the SharePoint site. We'll figure out what's going on there. So thank you.
Chair, you have the first caller for the panel.
Caller, please state your name and address. Caller, please state your name and address, and you'll have two minutes.
I'm Charlotte Cooper, 3409 Trimble Road in District 34. I oppose this rezoning for several reasons. I don't believe this request follows certain sections of the Metro Code, and if we don't follow Metro Code, why have a code? This is one current RS zone property in an established predominant single-family neighborhood that has requested a rezone to SP. To me, it looks like spot zoning. Although the property is large enough, RS does not allow two separate units. It is my understanding that SP zoning would still maintain the current base zoning. The land use table found at Metro Code 17.08.03D clearly shows that detached accessory dwelling units are not allowed for RS properties. This was not addressed in the staff report. Also not addressed in the staff report was Metro Code 17.16.03D, where there is an entire section that discusses the standards for DDU. This request does not meet subsection 7A of this section, which states the living space of a detached accessory dwelling shall not exceed 700 square feet. The staff report does tell us the DDU will be approximately 1,400 square feet. If allowed to complete this structure, it will be a two-story, two-bedroom, one-and-a-half-bath, 1,400-square-foot house with a
Quick question, 30 seconds.
The stofer work found on the issued permit that was eventually put on hold stated, renovate existing detached garage apartment to add additional full bathroom and bedroom, add carport to existing garage structure, not to be used for living or commercial purposes. Now, that doesn't make sense. So, I would have asked for clarification, but apparently the homeowner did not. If approved, this sets a dangerous precedent for RS zone neighborhood. I do not believe the mistakes made justify jeopardizing hundreds of RS zone neighborhoods.
Your time has expired. Please complete your thought.
Please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Sean, do we have other callers?
Chair, there are no additional callers in the queue for this item.
Okay, we will pause momentarily to give the public a chance to call in. Sean, other callers?
No additional callers.
Very good. All right, the applicant has two minutes to rebut that. Council lady, do you want to help in this rebuttal?
I guess I would like Mr. Lupier, because he's speaking more specifically to the permit and the size, but I appreciate neighbor's concerns, but, you know, respectfully, this is not a from-scratch DDU. I think there was already 900-plus square feet already in an existing apartment with kitchen and everything, and that, it was non-conforming, right? So, they've basically inherited that and got it permitted. But Mr. Lupier, could you speak to that?
Thank you, council lady. You officially have two minutes for rebuttal if you'd like to take them.
Thank you again. So, the existing garage was 900 square, it was a 900-square-foot apartment with a two-car garage as part of the building. The 900 square feet was heated and cooled. The building didn't get bigger when we did it. All we did is took the two-car garage away, put the bedroom in that spot and bathroom in that spot, and then we're putting a carport to the front of it. Our goal, again, is to help our aging parents have somewhere to stay. In the last meeting that we had, when, I guess we did it wrong trying to get it rezoned, we were told that we could attach the two structures, which we can do. We don't really want to because the only way to attach them where the big tree, and when I say big tree, it's 11 feet in circumference and probably 220 or 30 years old, great tree. I spent a lot of money trying to get it vitalized and trimmed up and making it look really good. The only place that we could attach the two buildings, that tree would have to go. I don't really want to do that, but we're almost left, you know, financially, I've spent a lot of money getting the garage where it was when we got the permit pulled, and now my only resource is going to be to take the tree down to attach the two buildings should we not be able to be rezoned for this one instance.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
One final wipe down.
I appreciate your time today. Thank you.
All right, I will declare the public hearing closed, and we will start the discussion among the commissioners. Council Lady Murphy, I'm going to start with you on this one.
Thank you. I just want to clarify, so it sounds like this was never actually a properly permitted apartment? Am I correct that the BZA turned this down because it was a non, this would have been a, I would assume that this was a non-conforming use, but then they would have taken it up? So, can we get some clarification on that?
So, the appeal that was taken to the BZA was an item A appeal of the decision on the cancellation or revocation of the permit. It wasn't an item A appeal on a non-conforming use. And so, what the BZA was looking at was whether or not the permit should have been revoked. And so, it's a little bit of a different standard. I have not, I haven't seen any permits related to when the garage was actually constructed and how it was constructed. But what the BZA was reviewing was something slightly different.
Okay. This is tricky because, I mean, I've been on the record before about not supporting and not liking things that have gone down this process and seeking a rezoning after things have already been built or an oopsies or things like that. I understand that Metro did issue a permit in error, but Metro legally can do that and revoke their own permits. That is within the purview of Metro and the legal realm there. It's been explained to me by Metro Codes plenty of times. My concern here is, is that if it was 900 square feet to begin with, that's over what is traditionally allowed for a DDU. That's concerning to me. It's concerning to me that there was a kitchen there. Do we know when this was zoned RS? Has it always been RS? 2002, it sounds like. And do we know when this was originally built?
If you can give me like two minutes, I may just need to pull
Yeah. I'm sorry. Council Lady Henderson, do you know?
Yeah. Matthew Wilkinson in her office did research. It was 2008 for the prior owner.
It was built in 2008?
Yes.
Okay. And it was zoned RS after that?
Before.
Before that? Oh, that's right. 2002 came before. Thank you, Vice Chair Withers, for always keeping me in line on my, on things that I need. So, it sounds like to me that this probably was not, that this was an error when it was originally built and was not caught by codes or codes signed off on it for whatever reason. But either way, where I came into this discussion, being somewhat okay with this, I've driven by here, they are large lots, this is not far from my district or my realm of usual travel, but it doesn't sit well with me because it sounds like it was not, it was not okay in the beginning. It wasn't done, it sounds like to me that rules weren't followed from the beginning and we're just putting a Band-Aid over something that should not have been allowed from the first place. But I'd love to hear if somebody else has a different perspective on that, and maybe I'm getting something wrong here, like my ears. So, I'd like to hear the rest of the conversation from the commission.
One thing I would just add is when the staff undertook the analysis, we didn't allow ourselves to just try to Band-Aid. I agree with you. We don't want to just go incorrect, but we did the analysis on its face of whether or not it was appropriate or not, and took some other considerations, if that helps at all in your thinking about the commission here.
It does help in the fact that this is a large lot, that it could be subdivided. If this wasn't a lovely, it looks like a lovely house from the street. If it wasn't a lovely house, somebody could subdivide this and put something, put two homes on it. I mean, I am taking that in consideration, but it just, I'm seeing it too many times across my district, and I'm sure I hear from other councilmembers about things slipping through the cracks and then we're having to come back and permit. So, I appreciate the analysis. I appreciate that this is a large lot. I think I'd like to hear from the other commissioners because I'm not 100% on, I'm torn on it.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Chair. I do appreciate a comment from Council Lady Henderson, and I do appreciate the comment from the property owner, and I do sympathize the situation. And this, you know, specific zone request reminds me of other property, which is we disapproved back in February. That was, I believe it was 2512 Roscoe. It was same deal. They want to have a garage to detached DDU. And that specific neighborhood, they did have lots of interesting two-dwelling unit and also, you know, surrounded by or nearby adjacent property has two-dwelling unit, two family-dwelling unit. So, for that, staff recommended disapproval. But the reason back then I disagreed with the staff recommendation is, one, it is T3 neighborhood maintenance. And T3 neighborhood maintenance tend to have larger, you know, area, acreage. And also, the reason for the specific zone change is just specifically allow usage of DDU. So, to me, just repealing or appealing one usage from that, you know, zone ordinance to use SP for solely that purpose is not appropriate for me. And also, in this case, you know, the DDU ordinance, it says, structure footprint in this case is lot is over 10,000 square foot, so footprint is allowed up to 1,000 square foot. But I understand this structure is 1,400 square feet. And also, living space is allowed up to 700 square foot, and clearly, this structure is over that, you know, DDU ordinance. So, for that many reasons, I am not comfortable as a planning commissioner to recommend it. But, you know, the beauty of those, you know, zone change is council has sole authority when it comes to zone change. So, as far as the planning commissioner's, you know, standpoint, I am not in favor of recommending this approval because otherwise, T3 neighborhood maintenance, one by one, for whatever the reason might be, we will be changing to SP to allow DDU. And, you know, we did pass the DDU ordinance, I understand, because this particular neighborhood is outside of UZO, so therefore, 30 housing overlay, it does not qualify it overlay. So, but that's the reason we do that, because we do, you know, have 30 contiguous housing will be more appropriate as an overlay, not single out, one by one spot zoning. So, to me, allowing this as DDU in that specific location with the neighborhood, community plan, as well as zoning, is not appropriate. So, one thing also, I'm a bit confused. I was researching some permit, and it said restrictive covenant for detached structure. And so, when it's applied for, I think it's a plumbing permit and electric permit, and applicants basically signed applicant covenant that the structure will not be used for residential purpose or a commercial purpose. So, I mean, it's, I don't understand why cause is allow shower or those kind of structure if it's not residential purpose. So, it's a little strange to me, but nonetheless, the permit was signed for that restricted purpose. So, all of those reasons, I am not in favor of recommending approval.
Thank you. Commissioner Tibbs?
It was helpful following such smart rebuttal. This was, you know, that's why sometimes it's good for us to listen to each other. I will start off, though. My initial thought was that I was okay with this, honestly, just because of such a large site and it actually fits within the neighborhood and, of course, understanding their use for it, you know, which I felt like was appropriate, of course, and but, and I didn't want the oak tree torn, you know, cut down either. And but, based on a lot of the technical things that my fellow commissioners have stated, it does give me pause to that because I don't want to start setting a precedent and moving forward with it, despite the fact, generally speaking, I don't have an issue with it. So, I appreciate Commissioner Johnson first saying how it just would have to go to council. But anyway, I do, I guess I'm probably a little bit more torn than Councilman Murphy because I, like I said, I really feel like it's appropriate. I just, I do worry about our role as commissioners and the technical aspect of making this change. The only condition I was actually going to make, which was, would still kind of be a little tougher problem, I was going to say that they comply with DDU regulations, you know, that was, which I still know it's smaller, you know, that would still be tough on you, but I, that was all I was actually going to, you know, propose. So, I'm going to stay a little torn here, just listening to my last two commissioners, but I do understand that the potential impact of approving it, too.
Thank you. Dr. Sims?
I'm confused about something. I usually turn to the American Planning Association's definitions of stuff, and in that case, a president is a principle or rule established in a previous case that is either binding or very persuasive when making decisions about a subsequent case. And in this case, we did make a decision with Roscoe that we wouldn't allow something like this. And I don't think that SPs are designed to be a remedial tool. I think it's a tool to be used in very, very special cases, and we are really, as a commission, I think, setting a goal to be even more wise about how we use SPs. So, I'm just not comfortable with this, and I'm so sorry because I've actually, I know this is a home, and like Commissioner Tibbs said, I do think that there's, if without the, all the presidents that were set already, I think I would feel comfortable with this in a neighborhood, but I also worry about the domino effect, what's going to happen to the adjacent lands, so.
Mr. Henley?
Yep, so, I'm new. I have to, I will have to start to learn and probably have my wrist slapped a few times, but I don't necessarily have the cloud over my head of what was voted for or approved earlier. For me, this is more in the spirit of what I think of neighborhood maintenance means, right? I mean, there's, I don't know how this impacts the community. I think, you know, preserving what's there now versus potentially converting this to a two-build where you tear down what you have and put two there, which you could do by subdividing the lot. I think this is a solution that I think makes a lot of sense. I appreciate the chair earlier sharing his other hats. I sit on the Nashville Tree Foundation, and so, to me, saving a tree that's 230 years old, I think that's a special condition. I mean, I think we could look at this in terms of, we could send this man home to go cut down a tree to do what he's going to do anyway, or we could look at that from a preservationist standpoint and a neighborhood maintenance standpoint. I mean, I could, as succinct as I can be, I mean, there's a lot of other stuff, but I think that makes sense to me.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussions? Council lady?
I'm sorry, Chairman. I've got two questions. First, Lisa, what would lot compatibility say here? Would this, could this be subdivided down the middle? Can you eyeball it? Are you, have you done enough of these at this point? I mean, these are pretty, these lots have large road frontage typically on this end of Estes, whereas my end of Estes would not, I mean, this would probably subdivide easier in my district along Wood Lawn. But then also, while you're eyeballing that, Lisa, if we could see the location of the tree or if that could be described?
I cannot give you just a quick on lot compatibility. I can tell you that I think that it would be okay from a size perspective. I think that it might come a little bit short on the frontage, although that's something that you all would be able to consider with special conditions. And so, I couldn't say that subdivision is completely out of the question without like some calculations, but I think that they would mean it from an area standpoint. And so, And so let me go back to the aerial. Okay, here we go. So the RS 20 and all of the RS zones actually permit attached accessory apartments as a byright use. And so essentially, the, if these two units were connected, then it would be permitted under the base zoning. And so I don't know if they can point out where the tree, but I'm assuming it's, it's sort of that giant canopy that you can see there.
That's kind of blocking the view of the garage now?
That's it. That's the one.
And y'all can just shake your head. This was for a pool house? Did I make that up?
No, that's a pool.
So where, is, the pool's coming?
Pool's in.
Pool's in, it's just not in the aerial. I don't know, this is, this is...
I'll put a picture of the tree if anybody wants to see it.
This is a tough one for me. I mean, I think I'd feel much more comfortable if, if there was some other fix for this. But of course, the council lady is able to take a disapprove bill to, to, to the body, and just wish there was a different fix here of, like, either we don't allow a kitchen there, or something that made it less like a second home on this lot. That would make me feel more comfortable. Is that a condition I can, we can put on, is that there's no kitchen? I mean, I understand there's a kitchen now, and it sounds like they may have renovated, but Habitat Restore takes those things, so is there a possibility that we do a condition to remove a kitchen? Is that something that would fix anybody's comfort level?
I have never, I don't know that we've ever gotten that specific in a condition, but can I get the staff's view on whether or not...
But doesn't that eliminate being for a dadau, or isn't that the...
Well, it would, it would make it less residentially, or less residential, less livable, I assume.
So you're, I mean, you're allowed, you can have a garage that has finished space, because you could have a man den or whatever. What are they called?
A man cave.
Man cave. I don't know. Whatever.
Is that classified in the code, Lisa?
But you can have finished space in a garage. That's not necessarily a separate apartment, if you will. And so, I mean, you could have a, a large room that had a partial kitchen, but it's not a dadau, it's not classified as a dadau. Does that, does that make sense?
Yeah, I guess what I've, the other thing has been like, no shower is, is how they've been, they've been done, justified before. I don't know, maybe those are just ideas for the council lady, if she decides to move this forward. But I, I'm trying here, but I just, I can't get away from what we've been very clear on before.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, I will need a motion.
Well, nobody's raising, so I, I will make a motion to disapprove staff recommendation.
That is a proper motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it, yeah.
So we have a proper motion and second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
So it... Mr. Tibbs, you need to vote.
I know, I know better. I'm, I'm going to vote with disapproval.
So it, four votes for disapproval, is that a motion? Is that unanimous? So it, the motion is approved to disapprove staff's recommendation. We're now on to item 17.
And I was going to give you an update on that. Council Lady Porterfield and the applicant's representative spoke, and they agreed to defer to June 24th, and the item will not be on consent. It wouldn't have been anyway, since it got pulled from consent. And Council Lady Porterfield said that she would not ask for a deferral at that meeting.
Okay, so...
And I believe she's still here.
We will need a motion to defer that matter to June 24th.
Motion to defer to June 24th.
We have a proper motion and a proper second to defer items 17 to June 24th.
I think we need to hold one second, we just lost our quorum.
I think we got, I think we quit on that one.
Okay. Council lady, we have a bathroom break very quickly. Sorry about that. Thank you for your patience.
Couldn't he vote, though, to break it?
There he is.
Couldn't, couldn't you break, vote to break it, though? No?
All right, Commissioner Henley, we have a motion to defer item 17 to June 24th with a proper second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, the motion carries. On to the next item. Item 26. Is that correct, Lisa? 23, excuse me. I skipped 23. 23.
I'm actually going to be presenting this item for you. So item number 23 is a rezoning request for 943, 945, and 947 Woodland. The request is rezone the three properties from MULA to SP. The properties are, it's three properties that make up approximately .6 acres located on the north side of Woodland Street. Here's another shot of the properties. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. The requested rezoning is a proposed regulatory SP. The SP would allow for all uses of MULA excluding, excluding short-term rentals, both owner and not owner occupied. This does modify some of the bulk standards of MULA in regards to both the height and FAR. So whereas MULA requires a step back on the front of Woodland Street, this would allow for four stories. It also allows for five stories along the alley side, given that there's a change in topography on the site. And so this would allow the site to work with that topography. The proposed FAR would also permit greater, I'm sorry, the proposed SP would also permit greater FAR than is permitted under the MULA zoning. So here is a table that compares for you the existing MULA with the proposed SP. So the uses are the same, except for it is more restrictive in that it is excluding short-term rentals, both owner and not owner occupied, from the permitted uses. The height is adjusted to allow for four stories on Woodland Street and five stories on the alley with no step back, but the maximum height on Woodland Street of 60 feet remains. The FAR under MUL is 1. The FAR under the proposed SP would be 2.75. The land use policy for the property is T4 urban mixed-use corridor. So this is a part of the broader corridor policy that goes up and down Main Street and along Woodland Street. So both of those corridors are sort of treated under one mixed-use corridor policy. Mixed-use corridor is intended to maintain and enhance and create mixed-use neighborhoods along a corridor. It's intended to serve, it's served by high levels of connectivity, complete streets, sidewalks, and existing or planned mass transit. The proposed SP is consistent with the T4 mixed-use policy at this location. It does allow for a mixture of uses. It also provides a transition in the height and floor area from Main Street to the opposite side of Woodland Street. Main Street is, has much more intense zoning, and so this is a way to transition onto Woodland. Additional height and floor areas such as this may not be appropriate on the south side of Woodland Street, where you're adjacent to a historic district. But on this north side of Woodland Street, where you're adjacent to properties that front on Main Street, which are much more intense, it is an appropriate location for that transition. Therefore, staff recommends approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions.
Thank you, Lisa. The applicant will have 10 minutes. Mr. Sloan, welcome.
Thank you. Doug Sloan, 6354 Torrington Road. Good evening, everyone. The policy, I'll make this one a little bit easier. The site, as you can see from this aerial, was damaged significantly during the tornado. The idea here is to build back a development that actually matches the policy. As Lisa was pointing out, it's T4 mixed-use corridor policy, which not only supports MUIA, which it is today, but also supports MUGA and MUIA. So the policy that we originally were looking for, not the policy, rather, the zoning we were originally looking for was MUGA, and it was supported by policy, but the councilman and others in the community were concerned about the overall height that that would have allowed. That would have allowed actually five stories at the street, and then with a one and a half to one sky plane, could have gotten significantly taller as it went back into the lots. To add to the issue of how tall that would have looked, this, this lot falls over 10 feet from where it meets Woodland Street back to the alley. So the massing certainly looks a little bit taller as you move towards Main Street, which with the policy is okay, because the policy intends on buildings getting taller as you get towards Main and being shorter as you move across the street to the south into the historic neighborhood. So we talked with the councilman, met with the neighbors, and finally came to a decision that, okay, well, we'll go with three stories actually up at the street, and then have it climb to four stories in the back. Now, climbing to four stories really is, it'll look like five stories, it'll measure five stories from the alley because of the topography change. So it'll be three stories again, and read at three stories along Woodland Street, have a 15-foot setback, a step back, I should say, after 45 feet, and then it will rise to 60 feet after that 15-foot step back. So it will still read as three and four at Woodland. It also still will be shorter in overall height than several of the projects that sit on the south side of Woodland. So even though you should be able to step up as you go across Woodland Street, this one will still be shorter than some of the other multifamily developments that back up to the neighborhood. I don't know that I have much more to add, other than there's been two deferrals to give us an opportunity to work more with the councilman, to work more with the neighborhood, and as was pointed out at the beginning, the SP would also include taking out short-term rentals. So unless anybody has any questions, we'll save the rest of our time for rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Sloan. The applicant?
Good evening. My name is Clay Haynes. I live at 814 Boscoval Street. Tonight, I'm in the unique position of being both a developer and a neighborhood resident. I live just a few blocks away from this location, and my daily commute on foot goes down and by many of the neighbors that I've spoken to about this project. At its core, this, this is a project that is about housing, and how and where do we need housing in Nashville? And, and I've lived in the neighborhood for more than a decade, and I see this as a transition project, from more intensive uses along Main Street to the preservation of the neighborhood where I'm raising my daughter. And we believe that this is an excellent bridge. Like anything, that there are trade-offs. For me, as a resident, when I think about how this district develops, right now, there are very intense commercial uses that are permitted underneath the base zoning, and I have some serious concerns about this becoming a location that basically becomes recreation for people who don't live in our neighborhood. Right now, believe it or not, there's no market rate for rent product on this side of Main Street. And so this, this project is seeking to do that. I was, I'm very sensitive to projects that push either traffic and/or parking into the neighborhood. Along that daily commute, as I'm walking through, I see the cars that many of the projects along Woodland have pushed into the neighborhood, and so have been fully committed to ensure that that does not occur with this project. The last thing that I would mention is relative to height. Right now, under MULA base zoning, it is permitted to 45 feet with a step back of 15 and up to 60. It's our intent to fully comply with that base zoning height requirement. That's also, that height has been established and very clearly established along this corridor with five other projects. So when you, when you, when you see the entire Woodland corridor, that height plane has already been established, and we're going to be fully compliant with that height plane. And then, I said the last thing. The final piece, it was a very easy involuntary decision that we made to prohibit short-term rentals, right? Congruent with our previous discussion, we need more long-term housing. I have in-laws who are getting up in age, and like the previous debate relative to dadaus, we can't accomplish one in our backyard, even though we are in the UZO and in the historic district for a whole spectrum of different reasons. And so if one of those individuals has to come and live with me, they have no for-rent product that they could walk to. So I really appreciate the opportunity tonight, appreciate the staff and all of their hard work, I appreciate this commission and all of the challenging decisions that you have to make, and with that, I'll yield my time.
If you'll quickly sanitize, thank you so very much. Councilman Withers, would you like to go next?
Chair, would it be okay if I go at the end of public comment?
You may.
Thank you.
We will now, we will now open this up to public feedback. Please come on up and state your name and address, and you will have two minutes to speak.
Good evening, commissioners. Pardon my reading, I wanted to make sure that I got what I needed to say in the two minutes. My name is Peter Greaves. I live 913 Fatherland Street, a quarter of a mile from this proposed development, and I am speaking in opposition. I'd like to take this, the commissioners back to about six months ago, when Councilman Brett Withers sent a memo to this commission on November the 9th of 2020 in support of the Five Points Rezoning Plan. In that memo, Mr. Withers states that he had vetted the plan with local use attorneys, commercial real estate professionals, former planning commissioners, not to mention key stakeholders, including property and business owners, as well as three local neighborhood associations. He goes on to say, "I believe that this rezoning proposal moves the area forward through base zoning districts that provide consistency, predictability, and certainty for the commercial property owners, business owners, and their residential neighbors." That's me. He then addresses Woodland Street specifically, stating that looking at Woodland Street holistically is beneficial to setting consistent expectations and standards across the length of the block faces. He then states, "The Woodland Street area shares the same mixed-use policy with Main Street and is located within the same Tier One center zone. There is already mug zoning present in places on this portion of Woodland, but I believe that consolidating existing CS, CL, and MUL zoning on Woodland to a consistent MUL-A brings consistency along the Woodland Street corridor as a step-down intensity from the Mug-A corridor on Main Street. So the pattern would be Mug-A corridor on Main Street, then a MUL-A corridor on Woodland Street, and then Russell Street in Edfield." That was the strategic vision that was laid out as part of the rezoning plan. That strategic vision was approved by this commission. As a residential neighbor, this proposal would like to ask that this commission state true to that strategic vision that was laid out by Mr. Withers in order to provide the consistency, predictability, and certainty that he sought when asking for approval for the Five Points Rezoning Plan and deny the SP. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. If you'll quickly sanitize. Shaun, we are now ready for callers who wish to call in. Your screen should show the call-in number. If you would please call in now, you do not need to wait to call until others have called in or finished speaking. Shaun, do we have any callers?
We do. We'll get the first one queued up, and I'll let you know when they're in. Chair, you have the first caller.
Please state your name and address, and you'll have two minutes.
Thank for your time, commissioners. You know, principally, I, I'm certainly not opposed to development of Woodland, certainly not opposed to the residential goal that the developers are aiming for. I think my main concern, and I've been in your shoes as a, as a planning commissioner in another southern city, large city, I think my main concern is, is we're making a fairly large, you know, SP, you know, request without a real specific plan. plan. Maybe there's one that's been given, but you know, there's still not a site plan presented or linked on the planning commission website. Although the developer has, you know, has met with us, he's made clear that, you know, his plans are sort of, you know, in flux, doesn't really know with the mix of one bedroom versus two bedrooms, exactly what size, exactly how much parking. You know, I tend to trust the developer when he says he wants to, you know, do three, then set, you know, do a setback and then do a four, yet we're doing an SP that doesn't require that. We're doing an SP that has a FAR, you know, that is almost three times what's allowed, and although, you know, I don't, you know, the plan he has looked okay to me, I just, I think it's a, it's a fairly large exception to what is typically in the area, and although the setbacks and the transitions may make sense stepping from Main toward, you know, the south towards Russell, you know, you have setbacks going from, you know, kind of east to west on Woodland towards Five Points. It's going to be a fairly large block building, and maybe it won't look that way, but we don't have a plan, and I think it is-
About 30 seconds.
-a mistake. I think it's a mistake to approve this without a specific plan. I would recommend denying and putting further conditions in place. Thank you.
So for the record, real quickly, will you state your name and address?
Brian Gibson, 920 Russell.
Thank you so very much.
Bye.
Shaun, do we have other callers?
They start timing me when I start talking, right?
Yes.
You have the next caller.
Please state your name and address, and you've got two minutes.
My name is Emily Richard. I live at 820 Russell Street, one block from Woodland Street and one block west of the subject parcel. I'm calling to oppose the SP for three reasons. First, it allows nearly three times, 275 times, the fourth base ratio, the FAR of our newly enacted attractive zoning for this Five Points sub-district of Woodland for multi-use projects at a FAR of one for less. Secondly, the project exceeds the height limits of the East Bank redevelopment plan, so it really can't be built anyway. Third, and I think I'm unique in bringing this up, both the SP and the staff analysis cite the wrong T4 policy. The staff error is totally understandable. Anyone who walks or drives Woodlands would recognize this is a critical transition road between Main and the residential area of Russell Street. They would assume that people are MUA applies, neighborhood multi-use, not a major thoroughfare corridor. I believe we need to sit down and address an oversight in the conceptual map. I don't know if you guys see it. That's exhibit one to my email. It shows a highlighter in orange of Woodland as a Tier One center along with Main, even though Woodland is not, is definitely not defined as a Tier One center. That's on exhibit two. Grab the map, you think corridor, redetect, it's clearly transition. Our new zoning of MUL-A-
30 seconds.
-in December is appropriate for a cheaper MUA transition free, but it represents a ceiling rather than a floor for intensity in this transit zone. In the new home buyer in Edgefield two years ago, I read the Brooklyn Conservation Plan, the Community Character Manual updated, and I really appreciate Nashville Metro's gift for engaging us residents in planning. With this surprise rezoning, unfortunately, there was no opportunity until today for public input, and there's still no-
30 seconds. Please close your shot.
Okay, just one, two seconds. This is not a unique infill project. The entire block of Woodland is ripe for redevelopment, and this first project, really, those three zoning really steps its own. We want vibrant building activity in our attractive zoning with new places to work, live, shop, and dine, but we want them consistently and predictably built within the MUL zoning limit that's properly set by our councilperson in December. Thank you very much for hearing me out.
Thank you so much, caller. Shaun, we're ready for the next caller. Please state your name and address, and you will have two minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Logan Keen. I live at 1411 Fatherland Street. I've lived in this area for 14 years now, formerly about a half block or so from this property, now live over in Lockton Spring. Surprisingly, from the applicant and from Mr. Sloan, you never heard anything about the fact that this property is in the East Bank redevelopment district, and that's under MDHA, and that plan was approved by the council more than 20 years ago. People who live and work in this area, and I would argue the Metro Council has been operating under the understanding that the design guidelines in that plan would sit atop the base zoning and atop the community plan with respect to whatever designs comes out of a development. But as far as we know, it's not been reviewed by MDHA. It could have been already, but it hasn't been. So if we're talking about approving this under the pretense that the FAR and the height will be X or Y, there's no guarantee that MDHA will approve it. And so my question rhetorically for you as the commission is, how can anyone, you or any informed citizen, make an informed decision about whether or not to support this when we have no idea if it will even be approved by MDHA? And the design guidelines, frankly, the plain language of those guidelines would suggest that there is no way anything this tall-
Oh, you have 30 seconds.
-would be approved. So I would encourage you to have a conversation about that and what the impact would be if MDHA comes back later on, after all the hearings, after all the conversations, and says, no, this plan by the developer won't meet their standard. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, caller. Shaun, we're ready for the next caller. Please state your name and address, and you will have two minutes. Please go ahead.
My name is James Guthrie. I live at 312 South 11th Street, about a half block away from this proposed development. Cumberland, Budweiser, Value Vet, Jim Five, Son of Chuck, Lives and Whiskers, and Sherwin-Williams, these are all businesses that I've been able to walk or bike to in the past few months to support residential life in East Nashville. When I'm needing new tools, who are able to walk to us, because then I can go to Nashville Running Company, park the ride down the street. When I need bike repairs, I have my app bikes right down the street. And when I blue drive and I need my car fixed, I have Main Street Tire right there. And these are all businesses that need neighbors to attract more businesses like them and to sustain the businesses that are already there. And if we restrict FAR on this development, which is the only major proposal we are considering here, that means less evidences because of the mixed-use development, but if the mix is will not be scaled down equally with the reduction in floor area because of the first floor being set of where commercial and office space can be, so it only affects the residences, and we need more residents in the neighborhood. It also says that when we have more walkable footpath residents, that leads to less traffic. What we need leads to more traffic is people coming in for entertainment uses, which will crowd out, or for short-term rental uses-
I'm learning about 30 seconds.
-and also it creates residents having to then get in our cars to drive to the neighborhood to be able to sustain these kind of retail necessities. They also add traffic. So I see this as a great way to curb that. I'd also note to the staff, this is a mile and a half from downtown, and so if you approve density here, this will probably lead to just fewer meetings where you're everything to people on the urban side of the proposed development there because we wouldn't let people live here. Thank you. Cheers.
All right, Shaun, we're ready for the next caller.
Chair, there are no additional callers in the queue for this item.
All right, we will pause momentarily to give the public the chance to call in if Shaun, any callers?
No additional callers for this item.
Councilman Withers? Or Mr. Sloan, do you want to go next in rebut? Come ahead. We'll let Withers go last.
We'll let the councilman close the show. So to deal very quickly with the MDHA overlay as opposed to the zoning that's before you tonight, the policy, as I've already talked about and Lisa talked about, is T4, mixed corridor, mixed-use corridor, which supports everything from MUN all the way up to MUI. And we initially came in asking for MUG, and that was to achieve the, both the FAR. The height is, under MUL, is fine. We can follow the height restrictions that exist under MUL. But the driving force was the FAR that was in the MUG that got us to this development. It keeps it at three and four, growing at the height within the height control plane. But again, because of the slope in the back, it ends up picking up quite a bit more floor area. It is unique. You can drive down Woodland, and there is this one area, and this is about in the center of it, where there is significant grade change from Woodland back to the alley that doesn't exist further to the east or the west. So I would say that it is different. Once, if this passes this body and then receives the required votes at the council, then they will have to go in front of MDHA, just like with any other development where you have a redevelopment district that overlays the base zoning. It's very complicated to develop in an overlay, and I'm sure that for general public, it's difficult to understand those layers of regulations that exist. So I certainly understand the confusion there. But we will have to go in front of them. And the one last thing I would like to say is that this will have retail and commercial at the ground level, and it's only 3,000 feet of commercial space that's intended to be split up into three or four pieces. And the reason for that is to keep it small, not have any restaurants, but have uses that help the community, that the community will use. So with that, goodnight.
Sanitize real quick.
Sanitize this time.
Especially for you, Mr. Sloan.
For the record, for everybody at home, he knows me.
Councilman Withers?
Thank you so much, Commissioners, and appreciate Mr. Greaves for coming out today and those who wrote letters and called in. Several folks have referenced, you know, the expiration of the Five Points Redevelopment District, and they sort of jogged across Woodland Street, the boundaries did, with the East Bank and the Five Points Redevelopment District. So when I was working on staff, with staff, to look at Woodland Street, we just looked at the whole street, right, just to get as much consistency as we could. It's because sometimes you have a parcel that is in one redevelopment district and the parcel next door is in the other. So we looked at Woodland Street consistently. The MULA was what the staff and I and historic all thought was appropriate for this area. It's about the closest match you can get to what the redevelopment district design guidelines call for. The one thing about the, when the redevelopment districts were done in the 19, early and mid 1990s, which was a long time ago, but at that time, as I understand it from my predecessor, Councilmember Jeff Ackerman, who still lives in the neighborhood, but what the thought was at that time was that they wanted to have shorter buildings in the center of Five Points that would be more commercial, and then have larger buildings with apartments a little bit further out. That was the thought at that time. What we have seen, I think, if you look at the 25 years that have preceded that, is that no building in that center area of Five Points was ever built that actually had upstairs apartments at all. None. That includes with East Nashville being kind of a hot market. And so what I would say is that there appear to be, or at least did, some feasibility constraints with building, a building that is that expensive but that has a couple of apartments. Now, we do have a few that are coming along now, but when you also add in, for this particular site, the grade change in topography and the amount of excavation that they would have to do and the concrete that they're going to have to pour, that also makes building, a two-story building with a third-floor penthouse, very expensive and unfeasible. So that is a reason why I respectfully disagree with some of my neighbors and friends who I love, who were around and participated at that time. My personal take on it is that the taller buildings belong more at the center of Five Points, in particular closer to 10th. When you go further down on Woodland, you do have some historic homes that are still present, and it makes sense, it makes more sense to have the buildings taper at that end of the street and have a little bit more height and intensity as you get closer to Five Points proper. That was my take on it at the time. The feedback that we got from neighbors during, when this came before the commission and the council for the rezoning plan was similarly that Edgefield neighbors were concerned about a lot of commercial intensity on Woodland. They wanted more residential. They wanted to be fully parked. They wanted no short-term rentals. And they tended to agree that they wanted buildings to be a little bit more modest towards Woodland 8th and 9th, and a little bit, you know, larger closer to 10th because it's further away from them. Well, this plan meets all of that community feedback that we got during that process that we just finished. It is residential. It's no short-term rentals. It's fully parked. It does meet the MULA standards. That will be consistent across the street. The only thing that we're asking for is a little bit additional floor area in the rear so that we can add more housing units. By the time that you build, for this site, by the time that you build a parking deck, which the neighbors want, by the time that you build that, it uses the land more efficiently that by the time you build that parking deck, just to go ahead and cover it with apartment units and more housing units than just to have a backyard, you know, a rear parking deck. That's a more efficient use of that land, and it's a more efficient use of that land that yields more housing, which we desperately need. So again, I mean, from a consistency standpoint, this will be consistent if other parcels do redevelop along Woodland. It just adds a little bit more floor area ratio in the rear so we can add more housing, which we desperately need. The point about the redevelopment district is a good point. What I would say is that the builder, in this case, assumes developer risk, and that final decision will be made by the redevelopment district, by the Design Review Committee. Planning is represented on that. I'm not. But if neighbors believe in that Design Review Committee, which I know that they do and I do as well, then let's trust the judgment of the Design Review Committee. Let's let them do their job. That's one of the reasons why we don't have a very detailed drawing of this. The engineering is still being worked out. We're still hearing from the community. We're still hearing from departments. This sort of is being designed as we go with feedback from departments and also from neighbors. We had a great community meeting at Edgefield. Miss Emily Richard, who spoke, asked a really great question about stormwater, how are you going to handle stormwater. Well, we don't really know the answer to that yet, but that's a fantastic question. It was a really good community meeting, and I was a little bit caught off guard that we had such a good community meeting, and then all of these emails start coming in opposition. So I was a little caught off guard by that. But to his credit, Clay, who is a neighbor, has had a lot of one-on-one conversations with many of those neighbors in the neighborhood. I've had a lot of conversations with business owners up and down the street and in Five Points. They all are excited about bringing apartments, not short-term rentals. It'll bring more residents that will share concerns of Edgefield residents. And for the businesses, it will bring more foot traffic. That's a little bit of a dead zone, and adding some more, you know, residents on that street will make it a safer street and bring more foot traffic to support the small businesses that we have. So they're really excited about that. So I ask your support today. Obviously, this will go to council. We can continue to work with the community and the departments. We can look at restricting additional uses out of MULA. There are lots of things that we can continue to do to customize this, bring it as a substitute on third reading based on the additional feedback that we receive. And obviously, the final design will be decided by the Design Review Committee, so it doesn't make sense for us to make you, substitute your judgment for that at the Design Review Committee today. So I, this project is based on a lot of community feedback that we did receive during the recent Five Points rezoning plan. We're still listening to the community and looking for good comments and constructive feedback. Welcome any of your constructive feedback, but I would request your approval today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Councilman. Seeing no other comments, I will declare the public hearing closed. Dr. Sims, I'm going to start with you this time.
I was kind of surprised to see how much comments came back from the neighborhood and how, in many questions, there, I think there were basically two questions when I kind of started trying to condense all this. And part of it had to do with the MDHA piece and feeling really like that is a pretty big if. And then the other thing I think that they really were paying attention to was why, why the rush? What is it that's making this, instead of having to wait and just kind of go ahead and start doing your community meetings, fleshing it out, giving them a little more vision, they wanted, they were really questioning why, and I'm questioning that. I've always been a little reluctant to approve zoning changes without more detail for the neighborhood because we're basically asking them, trust me, we're going to bring you something good. And I don't necessarily think that that is the smartest way to deal with neighborhoods. And yet, Councilman, I really respect the way you've taken good care of your neighborhood. So I don't know how I feel about both of those. I do, somebody, I think it was Doug, that said 1990 was a long time ago. Well, that's when I was cutting my teeth, and so that was in MDHA stuff. And that is a pretty big if, given all the changes that are coming to MDHA. And I do wonder why we have, why we can't slow down a little bit and let them have more buy-in, particularly since the redistricting plan has been in front of them just recently. And I don't know the answers to those, so I want to listen to my colleagues.
Mr. Hedley?
Well, one, I'd like to thank both the applicant as well as the councilman for bringing the context that they did, and I think being extremely responsive to what you have heard from the community. I did, I agree with my fellow commissioner. You know, there were a couple of things I think that really rung true to me. I think one of those was just not having more of a program site plan. But it sounded like that's an intention to continue to work with the community upon, and it's not a final SP. It has a lot of work to be done, I understand that. Also, having co-chaired the Affordable Housing Task Force, I appreciate the responsiveness to our city's housing crisis and trying to produce a product that we desperately need. I think one thing that really jumps out to me is that, you know, you're trying to economically solve a challenge in a neighborhood, and that doesn't always ring true to the neighbors. And so I think, you know, again, Councilman, I appreciate you making that case, the understanding that sometimes that is a factor that needs to be considered. And I think that's part of the reason, again, I say, you know, SPs, they're the tool we have. And I think, you know, unfortunately, we don't have the economics or the market that we might like to produce housing, so we use the tools that we have. And I think this is an example of trying to do that. I'll close with that. I would say I lean towards supporting it because I also feel like, again, residents want to keep, in my opinion, residents want to keep more areas, more like a neighborhood. And that's when you put residents there and things for residents to enjoy. And I think this is taking something that could be commercialized heavily with the brand of East Nashville and Five Points and actually producing something that allowed people to have livable space.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Murphy?
Thank you. I had questions about the parking, and so it sounds like there's a parking deck because we know that there's already parking issues in East Nashville around here. We all hear that, especially because we work down the street and things like that. And so I'm glad to hear that that's being considered and part of this. I'm also wondering if, I didn't hear anything about ingress and egress. I assume the alleyway would be, I'm getting a head nod on alleyway as well would be mandatory. Is that right, Lisa?
That's right. With this sort of zoning, the access would be limited to the alley.
Okay, I think that's good as well. This is an area that I've spent considerable time around, given, given the district, the political district that it's in, at the state level. And this is an area that the street seems almost vacant a lot of the time because it is a lot of office spaces that are used during the day that it's almost dead at night. And so I think this will bring some, you know, life to this area that is needed. It's also, we didn't really touch on it in the presentations, but it is just a block off of, off of Main, which turns into Gallatin, which we've already discussed in Councilman Young's district. And, and this is, the Gallatin is one of our highest-used transit corridors. When we were talking about the transit plan when we were first elected, the referendum that did fail, the, the plan planned on starting on Gallatin because it was the most heavily used and the easiest to, to get transit improvements on and things like that. And so I think this is a very appropriate place to put this type of, of development and density, and I think this is a good blend of, of what needs to happen here. To kind of speak to the chicken and egg part of MDHA, they have a design review committee there, and so that's kind of where the design review needs to take place, where at first I would, you know, I sometimes am hesitant about regulatory SPs, but you have to look at them as if they are the pattern for the project that you're making and the instruction packet. And so we're setting those guidelines for them to then design the rest of their project based on our feedback and take it to MDHA. So I think that this is, this is the appropriate timeline here of not putting the cart before the horse or the chicken before the egg. I think this, that is the way the process is set up. And so I think our job and our role tonight is to put these parameters on that regulatory SP, and I think it's appropriate for us to do that and support this at this time.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I thought this SP is a very interesting hybrid because backside is MUGA and then actually, actual portion is MULA. So you are kind of mixing front end and back end, kind of mushed it, and then come up with height within MULA. And so I think from the neighbor's point of view, if the height is within that, you know, MULA restriction, it is good for what a neighborhood is asking for. And also, at this point, no short-term rental is good for the neighbor because many neighbors, especially in that, you know, historical residential zoning neighbors, are not really fond of short-term rental. They would like to rebuild a neighborhood, so that's a plus. But I think since, you know, it's always a regulatory SP is the tough one because as a neighbor and also as a developer, you have to maximize, maximize your imagination and then put the regulation or imagination into the restriction as much as, you know, you can and accommodate the neighbor's needs. So in that sense, I feel like maybe a little bit premature and, you know, is there anything more you can accommodate for neighbors' needs other than, you know, a no short-term rental? That would be my little reservation. But as far as, you know, this site specific, I really think it's a really interesting hybrid regulation. So I am kind of torn right now, but I do understand the rationale.
Actually, for this one, I'm actually in favor of. I think it aligns well with policy, and I appreciate with Councilman Withers that it does kind of bring, bring height to the middle of the block. I think actually does make more sense and, and housing that, you know, the rental housing and housing in this area, you know, I know that's a use, but I think it's also very appropriate. And the fact that, you know, does, you know, even the intentionality of, you know, three stories to four and even in acknowledging that the, the slope would make it other, make it a little higher back toward Main and like, and Councilman Murphy brought up, that is, you know, one of our major, you know, arteries. But, so I'm, I feel like it's very appropriate, honestly, and I, I'm actually fully supported. And I'll even start off with a motion, make a motion to approve staff recommendation.
That is a proper motion?
Second?
We have a proper motion in second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. All right. Can we take a quick bathroom break? And we're going to shift Mr. Lehman to Director Kemp's chair, is that correct?
That is correct. No, I'm not going to a Preds game. I am not. But I have asked, I have asked Mr. Lehman to, to carry you through the end of the meeting, and he will do a great job.
All those that believe that denial, raise your hand. All right, we're going to take a quick five-minute bathroom break, and we'll be back to hear Lisa, we are now on to item 26. Is that correct?
Yes, and Patrick will be presenting that for us from WebEx.
Good evening, planning commissioners. This is Patrick May here. I'll be presenting item 26 on behalf of Planning Land Development. Just want to confirm that you can hear me through audio.
Yes, sir, we can.
Okay, we'll begin. Next slide, please. This is a request to rezone from R6 to RM9. Next slide, please. Staff's recommendation is to approve. Next slide. The property is located at 5607, 5607B, 5609, and 5611 Moore Road, approximately 60 feet southeast, southeast of 57th Avenue North. The property contains a total of 2.46 acres, and Moore Road fronts there in the screen in a direction of northwest to southeast. Next slide, please. Site is currently zoned R6, with the surrounding zoning being consistent with R6. We do have some commercial uses scattered throughout the neighborhood. Next slide, please. Policy for the site is T4 Urban Neighborhood Maintenance and Conservation Policy. The maintenance policy is intended to maintain the general character of the existing urban residential neighborhood. These areas will experience change over time when buildings are expanded or replaced, and effort should be made to retain the character when this occurs. The conservation policy is intended to preserve environmentally sensitive land features through protection and remediation. In this instance, the conservation policy identifies floodplain and floodway at the rear of the site. Next slide, please. The property is located within T4 Neighborhood Maintenance, which intends to maintain the general character. As these areas experience change, it is important to retain the existing character. The RM9, as proposed, is consistent with the policy at this location. The surrounding context contains a moderately dense urban neighborhood with a mixture of commercial and multifamily uses, along with single and two-family. The requested RM9 zoning would permit a maximum of 22 dwelling units on the site. The proposed RM9 zone district would result in less intensity than existing multifamily uses within the surrounding neighborhood. The proposed density is generally consistent with the permitted density, which could be achieved through a subdivision, although slightly more intense. The RM9 zone district would provide for more flexibility to avoid sensitive features on the site than would likely occur with a normal subdivision. Site fronts Moore Road, which is classified as a residential collector street within the major and collector street plan. And due to the property's frontage along Moore Road, a residential collector, additional density is appropriate. Additional, additional density supports the commercial uses that are located to the northwest of the site along Moore Road. Next slide, please. In conclusion, staff's recommendation is to approve as the requested RM9 zone is consistent with the policy in this location. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. We will now give the applicant 10 minutes. Is the applicant with us by phone?
Yes, this is Michael Dewey. Can you guys hear me okay?
We can. If you'll state your name and address, you will have 10 minutes. Thank you so much.
Yeah, this is Michael Dewey with Dewey Engineering. Address is 2925 Berry Hill Drive in Nashville, Tennessee. I'm sorry, I can't be there with you guys today. We've been coordinating this, the appropriate use for this property with the owner. Over the past couple of years, we coordinated with planning staff, and they suggested that we coordinate with the community and the council lady. So we reached out to the council lady and met with the neighborhood leadership group in January and have been communicating with them since then. The owner has received a letter of support from the council lady as well as the neighborhood leadership group. We just want to reiterate a couple of the, a few items that are stated in the staff report that you may have seen. The neighborhood contains a diverse mixture of lot sizes and structure types. The proposed RM9 zoning would also result in less intensity than existing multifamily uses within the surrounding neighborhood. The, the proposed RM9 is consistent with the T4 Neighborhood Maintenance Policy, which recognizes change over time. The site fronts Moore Road, which is a collector street, and due to the property's frontage along Moore, the RM9 density is appropriate, according to the staff report. With that, just yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, sir. We will now open this meeting up for the public hearing. Seeing no one in the audience, Shaun, do we have callers on this item?
Chair, we don't currently have callers in the queue for this item.
All right, we will pause momentarily to give the public a chance to call in. Shaun, any callers?
We have no callers for this item.
Thank you, ma'am. I will declare the public hearing closed and open this up to the commission for discussion. Councilwoman Murphy, I'm going to start with you again.
Thank you, Chair. I have a few questions. Do we know, do y'all have a slide with whether this property flooded? Because on the other side of the creek here, if we zoomed out a little bit, is Height Street, which many of the properties on that street, on the other side of the bend of Richland Creek here, were bought out because of the flood, because they flooded in 2010. So I have serious concerns about the impact on the creek here. It is downstream from my district and where I personally live, but I know Richland Creek is increasing in velocity and size because of the density built around it and in the surrounding area. If you look just at the overview of the nations here, this is where entire streets have been completely rebuilt because of the underlying lot lines that were brought back up. This is where a lot of the homes were built too close because the codes inspector made a mistake. And so the, the codes department had to go back and basically wiggle around to allow them to have, they have like, I think it's like a couple feet too close. The homes were literally built too close together already. So I have a lot of concerns about continuing to increase the density here. Where Moore Road goes under the interstate, I guess, to the right on this screen, where it goes under the interstate, it floods very heavily. It is not uncommon for me to see cars stalled out there because they thought they could drive through the water and, and they can't. So I just, I can, without seeing a site plan of, or this being an SP, I have a lot of concerns. I also think it's odd that this is kind of like, it looks almost like cul-de-sac with a, I'm, I'm concerned about how, how that last house that doesn't appear to be a part of the rezoning, how they're going to continue to have access to their home. Again, without seeing a site plan and a SP, I can't, I can't support this. Plain and simple.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I too have same concern, looking at the parcel viewer, the very last or rather southern portion of the property is floodway and under 2010 flood. So I think in that, those kind of parcel make sense So I think in that, those kind of parcel make sense to have multifamily structure if it pushed towards Morrow Road, where there was no floodway or no flood, you know, history. But since this one is a straightforward zone, we cannot condition where the building should go. So that's my biggest concern. If this one is SP to indicate where the building will be and where the open space will be and so forth, I will be more inclined to support. But not knowing just straight zoning, I do have lots of reservation.
Commissioner Tibbs?
I think actually, based on, you know, policy and the intention for it, I don't have necessarily any, anything that really bothers me a lot about it that I'd be pretty much in support, but I think my other two commissioners bring up good points that almost make me want to defer it and, you know, offer that to get a little bit more information that they've brought up. I'm not, I think that that will be probably what my choice could be for this one.
Dr. Sims?
I agree with my colleagues that there's something not quite right with this in terms of how it sits in the floodplain, and I don't know how, I actually did go look at this, and the water is really close here, and so without just amassing all of them up front, which would, I know the neighborhood would not like, I don't know how you actually build on this, so I need more detail. So I think we need an SP or something.
Yeah, I'm compelled to agree with my fellow commissioners. I was also, one of the big things that I made a note about was just access to the one property that seemed like it's kind of now, kind of on an island back there, and what was the agreement or with an easement? I mean, I don't know if we want to allow the, or if the applicant would like to address that during their time, but for me, it's more like I just, I'd like more information. Again, I'm a fan of the SP, I know a lot of people aren't, but I think for this particular reason, it allows you to bring something that's much more, much more digestible when you try to analyze a particular site. So yeah, I'm in agreement with my other commissioners.
All right, any other discussion? Commissioner Tibbs, would you like to make a motion?
Well, it sounded like it was a little bit more of a different than defer that I was going to bring up, so you know what? I make a motion that, I'll go along with my commissioners, I'll make a motion that we disapprove staff recommendation.
That is a proper motion? That's a proper motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to disapprove, please state aye. The motion to disapprove carries. We're on to item number 27. Lisa?
I'll be presenting this item. Item 27 is a rezoning request for a property located at 321 Larkin Spring Road and 601 Medical Park Drive. It's a request to rezone from OG Office General to MULA Mixed Juice Limited Alternative. This is another view of the site. There's one piece of property to the north side, which is 3.34 acres, and to the south, 1.92 acres. You can see here the context of the properties, where they are located, on Larkin Spring. TriStar Medical Campus is to the rear there, and the Middle Tennessee School of Anesthesiology to the south. Staff recommendation is to approve. The existing zoning is OG Office General, which allows for intense office uses. The proposed zoning is Mixed Juice MULA, Mixed Juice Limited Alternative. The land use policy for the area is District Major Institutional, so this is a policy that is intended to maintain, enhance, and create districts where major institutional uses are the predominant use, and where development redevelopment occurs in a manner that complements the character of surrounding communities. So land uses can include a mixture of uses such as medical campuses, hospitals, and colleges and universities, as well as uses that are ancillary or complement those principal uses. In this case, this major institutional recognizes medical uses as well as the School of Anesthesiology. MULA is consistent with the land use policy of District Major Institutional. The major institutional supports uses that are permitted by MULA. It supports, and the zoning would support the campus and the surrounding area by allowing for additional uses and housing options that would support the institutions located within the major institutional policy. Therefore, staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Lisa. Mr. Dale, thank you for being patient. You are the applicant, you will have 10 minutes. Please state your name and address.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm Roy Dale. My office is 516 Heather Place, Nashville, Tennessee. I'm representing the applicant on this. We've actually met with a council member early on, we had community meetings to try to come up with the best plan. There was also, the council member I know has worked with staff on this in order to come up with what felt like would be the appropriate zoning. I was going to just say, you know, follow the staff's recommendations, but based upon all I've heard today, I'm trying to anticipate what your concerns might be. And so, as you'll notice, at this piece of property, the infrastructure's there, these are fairly small parcels, and so there's not a lot of, there's no natural features or there's things that you need to worry about within that respect. This is sort of a unique piece of property, it is a campus, but it's sort of missing something, and it's a mixture of uses that it's actually missing. These properties are zoned OG, there is really no need for additional office here, and so I think a mixture of use is something that the community has more or less said we'd like to see, have some flexibility, and that's what this zone change does. And I know there's been a lot of discussions about SP, and actually, when you look at base zoning, if you look at the bulk standards in base zoning, the heights, the floor-to-air ratios, those are more or less set up, the uses, if you had a regulatory SP, those are the things you'd be talking about. And so those are already set up within a parameter of a base zone change. So base zone change doesn't just mean, you know, you could put an office or you could put a residential use, it also sets floor-to-air ratios, and heights, and setbacks, and other standards that the Metro Code has as far as landscaping is concerned, and since these are small parcels with existing streets, I think staff has more or less agrees and actually helped the council member come up with the concept of using, or the suggestion of using a base zoning of MULA, which I think is appropriate. So I'll just hold on for a couple of minutes in case someone calls in that has a question that maybe I can't answer, that I haven't tried, attempted to answer. I appreciate your help. I've been really surprised today, people that have called in are so articulate, it's unbelievable. It's like everybody's so articulate with the zoning code and the way things work. It's quite impressive, and maybe just as a result of COVID and people just sitting and looking at their computers, I don't know. It's amazing, though, to me, it really is, it's quite amazing. So I'll sit back and see if we have any callers, and then I'll continue on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dale. We'll reserve two minutes for rebuttal if needed. We'll now open this item up for public discussion, seeing no one in the audience. Sean, we will wait for phone calls on item number 27.
Chair, we currently do not have callers on this item, so we'll take a pause, and you can let us know when you're ready to check in.
Sean, any callers?
No callers for this item.
All right, I will declare the public hearing closed and open this up for discussion among the commissioners. Is there a potential motion? Council Lady Murphy?
I'll move to approve.
That is a proper motion? And a proper second. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye. The motion carries. Mr. Dale? Dr. Sims?
I also wanted to address this to Mr. Dale, that one of the reasons the neighborhood's so articulate is because of initiatives that the planning department actually started about, a planning school that's now going in its fourth class, and so neighborhood leaders are beginning to, and it's thanks to the hard work of this department.
It's impressive.
All right, we are now on to item number 28.
Chair, this is Sean in the call center. The presenter for this item is Abby Rickoff, who is working out a kink in her audio, but she should be up now.
Abby, are you with us? Abby, can you hear us?
I'll get us started on this one, and then if Abby is able to jump in, then she can...
Yes, I'm sorry, here I am.
Oh, there she is.
If you will bear with me one moment, can you all hear me okay?
We can, Abby.
Okay. I will present. So this is Abby Rickoff, and I'm presenting the last item on tonight's agenda, item number 24, I'm sorry, number 28. Excuse me one moment. Which is a request to rezone properties at 404 and 400, I'm sorry, 404 and 0 Old Hickory Boulevard. This is a request to rezone from one and two family residential, R10, to multifamily residential alternative, no SP RP, RM15A NS, zoning for properties located at 404 and Old Hickory Boulevard, unnumbered, at the corner of Walker Street and Old Hickory Boulevard. Next slide, please. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Next slide. The site is .7 acres and includes two parcels located on the north side of Old Hickory Boulevard, at the northwest corner of Old Hickory Boulevard and Walker Street. Each parcel is similarly sized and approximately .35 acres. The eastern parcel is vacant, and the western parcel includes a single-family residential use. The site is located directly west of Madison Middle School, with Stratton Elementary located just to the north on the same property. Property located on the west side of Walker Street, opposite the site, is zoned OR20 and contains a small medical office. This site is across the street from an existing church, which you can see on the screen on the south side of Old Hickory Boulevard. Next slide, please. Here is the zoning map. The large parcel east of the site is where the schools are located. Next slide, please. The site is located along a major corridor, Old Hickory Boulevard, which is an arterial boulevard designated by the Major and Collector Street Plan, or the MCSC, and the Urban Neighborhood Evolving Policy, which is intended to enhance the corridor with moderate intensity residential development that would increase housing choice in the area. Next slide, please. The site is also located adjacent to a Tier One Center identified by the National Next Growth and Preservation, Growth and Preservation Concept Map. Centers are intended to be the focus of coordinated growth, where additional intensity such as RM15A NS is expected to support the existing and future transit service. Next slide, please. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions. The standards for voting placement, parking, and access included in the RM15A NS district will improve the relationship of the development to the street, enhancing an urban neighborhood consistent with the goals of the evolving policy. In order to provide better access management along the corridor, staff recommends a condition requiring that all vehicular access be limited to Walker Street. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you so much, Abby. Council Lady Van Reese, would you like to go first? Perfect. Do we have the applicant on the line?
Good evening.
Good evening, applicant. If you'll state your name and address, you will have 10 minutes.
Perfect. My name is Jared Cunningham of Catalyst Design Group. Address is 5100 Tennessee Avenue. I just want to thank staff and Nancy for working with us on this project. Like mentioned in the staff report, it's a highly trafficked corridor, and intense use, expected to have some transition off of the corridor, and so with the proposed rezoning, that's, the intent is to provide transition elements from kind of the high-intense, highly-used corridor into the neighborhood. We had a public meeting, and originally came in with a RM20A NS, and consulting with the council member and the neighborhood, the developer decided to come back and downship that zoning to an RM15A NS, and that was in order to help accommodate some of the residents' concerns with limiting density and things like that. So I think that is most of what I have to say. I will stop here and reserve time for any rebuttal.
Thank you so much. We will now open this up for the public hearing. Seeing no one in the audience, we will invite the public to please call in. Sean, do we have any callers?
Chair, we don't currently have callers, so we'll take a pause in case anyone is trying to reach us, and then check back in.
Thank you so much. Sean, any callers?
Chair, we have no callers for this item.
Thank you. We will declare the public hearing closed, and Council Lady Van Reese, thank you for being patient with us.
Did Roy wipe this down? I'm just making sure. Thank you. It's always, it's great to be out in public again, right? So I appreciate the opportunity to see some faces today. I stayed because I wanted to make sure that the community knew that I was going to be present. I am very proud that in my six years, this is, I believe, the only thing that's ever been pulled off consent, and so as you can hear, it sort of could have been. But in regard to that, we've been able to talk not only with the neighbors in regard to this issue, but been able to actually communicate with the neighbors in giving them resources through the Nashville Neighborhood, in-to-in, to be able to start forming a neighborhood association in the area, so that it's a little bit easier for them to communicate regarding the Walker Avenue area and the Williams area as it moves forward. So that was a great result in regard to getting a new neighborhood association formed because of this development. As you can see, the dentist's office on the other side is fairly dense, it's been there for a long time, and they've been able to successfully have folks pull into Walker and into their parking lot, and that's not been a problem at all for the neighbors. This home I want to mention is a very dilapidated home. It's not a home that can be saved, it's been in eyesore for a while, you know, we don't like to see homes torn down when they're perfectly good, and so I wanted to make sure that you guys knew that this was going to have to be demolished anyway, so that's something to keep in mind. The beautification of the idea of doing, with this rezoning, will allow 11 town homes as a maximum, even though it says 15, because of this lot size, it'll only be 11, and being able to kind of pull in from Walker, park behind, or underneath with a garage will allow that opportunity. And the beautification on the front is what I'm very excited about, because there's an existing sidewalk, there'll be some updates to that sidewalk and a tree-lined street, and so I'm very happy about that as well. So with the beautification, with the reduced density, with the creation of a new neighborhood association, this is a win for us. There was an email that I got earlier today that the new leader of this neighborhood association was requesting me to have one more meeting before it hits public hearing at the council level, so I asked for your endorsement of this to move it along, and because I think it would be all the way to August, if I'm not mistaken, so we have plenty of time just to have one more meeting to discuss how stormwater works. So we have plenty of time just to have one more meeting to discuss how stormwater works. And so with that, I request your opportunity to be able to start a new neighborhood here. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Council Lady. Commissioner Henley, we're going to let you start the debate among the commissioners.
Awesome. Thank you, Chair. Well, in addition, thank you, Council Member Van Reese. In addition to all the great things that Councilman Van Reese said, I'm a big supporter of incremental density. And I think this is a great opportunity to do it right. Again, taking into consideration access off of the main road, also noticing that it's on a bike path. I think it's just, it's just a great opportunity to densify an area and to do so with minimal impact to a community. And I also want to say, I think it's really good, the outcomes that you can have from community engagement just by, you know, taking on some of these challenges. But I would agree with the staff recommendation with approval with conditions.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Sims?
I have nothing to add. He's really articulate and really smart. I'm glad you're here.
Mr. Tibbs?
No, I agree. I'm in support.
Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you. I know when, every time zone change comes in, our neighborhood is concerned is density and traffic. But I think this specific location, it really makes sense with our policy and proximity to major street. So I'm in support.
Thank you. I was joking earlier, some of y'all know that I've worked for representative, State Representative Bill Beck for many years. And tonight has basically, all of our cases have been adjacent to or in his district. So I feel very comfortable supporting the density here. Again, it is walking distance to the Gallatin Corridor. And so it is very appropriate for, I think I've already, I've already covered the Gallatin Corridor Transit tonight. So with that, I would be more than thrilled to make the motion for approval on this.
That is a proper motion.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, please say aye. The motion carries on to other business. It's an important night, the election of officers. So the first position up is the chair. Council Lady Murphy?
Especially with our current chair not being here tonight, you already saying that you refuse any nomination to chair. I would like to make the motion to renominate our chair, Greg Atkins, to continue on.
All those in favor of re-electing Mr. Atkins as chair, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. All right, now to vice chair. Commissioner Johnson?
Yes, I would like to nominate Commissioner Jessica Farr for the position of vice chair.
That is a proper motion?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor of Jessica Farr being vice chair, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. All right. On to executive committee. Council Lady Murphy?
Thank you. I'd like to nominate my constituent, Brian Tibbs, to the executive committee.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, Mr. Tibbs. Council Lady Murphy, back to you on historic zoning.
Thank you. I would like to nominate Mina Johnson to the Historic Zoning Commission.
That's a proper motion and second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. And lastly, but not least, Commissioner Johnson?
Yes, I would like to nominate Chair DeJure, Jeff Haines, to Parks Committee.
Second.
Can we have discussion over this? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. On to other business, we will go to historic report. Commissioner Johnson?
Yes, I would like to share just one very interesting case we discussed at the last meeting. The application was to build a fence over rooftop bar because of the safety concern with iconic clock. We, as a Historic Zoning Commission, disapproved the specific design because the fence came all the way, the edge of the building, the front. But apparently, the rooftop bar is very concerned, such as the bar next door throwing the trash, or sometimes people try to jump over to next rooftop bar. So I would like to enlist any architect, engineer, who would like to preserve the historic building of the nature, to lend your idea and work with historic staff to come up with appropriate rooftop bar safety mechanism. Thank you.
Thank you. Quick update on parks, two matters. One, we are still debating the new name of Hadley Park. We have another Parks Board meeting next Tuesday. I welcome all of you all to come and participate in that ongoing discussion. And secondly and importantly, we are reopening Church Street Park on Thursday, June 3 at 12:30 and invite all of you all to come to that long overdue reopening of Church Street Park. Seeing we have nobody on the executive team here, I guess there'll be no executive report, director's report. Mr. Lehman, anything from your end?
I'll just say, we did our council budget hearing last night, and that went well. And we're looking forward to moving forward with the budget process at council. And we'll wait to see how that, how that goes. But other than that, I don't have anything else right now.
And lastly, legislative. Council Lady Murphy?
That's what I was going to say. I was unable to attend last night, but heard positive things about the budget presentation. I encourage you all to, of course, contact the council to reiterate the importance of the additional staff that's in the budget for planning. I think that's a game changer, not just for us as a commission, but for Nashville as a whole. So I appreciate the mayor putting that in there. But I do think that we need to also communicate that with, since they come to us all the time asking for things, we might as well go to them. So with that, I'll just be renewing the motion to get council to the Parks Department for you, Jeff.
Thank you. I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Good evening.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again, or for more information about this and other programs, visit nashville.gov.